We'll call this meeting to order.
All right, Dr. Chase?
Here.
Mr. Decatur's absent. Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerback?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
I'm sure you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Color Guard presentation by the Mountain View High School Marine Corps JROTC and Pledge of Allegiance?
Color Guard. Present. Pelis. Please join me in pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hear, read. Pelis. Cut. Order. Pelis. Ready, cut. On.
We'd like to thank the following cadets who are with us this evening: Cadet Russ, Cadet Scott, Cadet Poth, and Cadet Knight, and also the instructors of the Mountain View High School Marine Corps JROTC program, Lieutenant Colonel Richard Barnes, and Sergeant Major Alan Tanner. And they will be back with us when we come to awards. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda? Dr. Chase?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda but with an amendment. I would like to remove item 10.01, Approval of Adjustment to Bus Driver Hourly Rate Pay Rates to address bus driver shortages. Be put off for a later date. Dr. Kizner, Chairwoman Healy, and I met with bus drivers this morning at a town hall meeting. It was very informative, and they would like to be part of developing the solution to the bus driver shortage. They requested that we pull this item from the agenda until a committee, including drivers and monitors, can meet to come up with a hopefully better solution. They also asked that if there is a pay increase for current drivers, that it be retroactive to October 1st, when item 10.01 would have gone into effect if we voted on it tonight.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion for approval of a revised agenda. And second, by Ms. Young, do we have any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Do we have a fix to the problem that we have right now with kids being out on Route 1, out at their bus stops for 30 minutes, an hour, kids staying at school until 4:30, teachers having to stay there until another bus run can come get them? This wasn't supposed to be a fix of the salary scale. This was supposed to be a recruitment fix, and then we were going to deal with the other stuff later. So I just want to know if anybody's given any consideration how we're going to help Barry Suddeth fix this problem. That's a question for the floor.
Ms... Well, let me ask this question. Is that a question about whether we should approve the amended agenda, or is that a discussion? We can, you know, have a discussion about that, you know, this evening, but is that related to the motion to approve the agenda with that item removed?
Well, I won't support it if we're not going to have a Plan B to get our kids to school in the morning. I have it, my son's been sitting on Route 1, standing on Route 1 for 30 minutes, calling me saying, "Mom, the bus hasn't come yet," and it's not Barry's fault. It's our fault. So whether we have the conversation later, or we have it now, I'm not saying that we don't, we want to listen to them. I want to listen to them. I want to hear what they have to say. But we have a problem. We need to fix it. We can't punt it. We can't keep doing this until December. My kids standing out on Route 1, my constituents' kids are standing at the bus stop for sometimes an hour. We got to do something now. Is everybody going to go get their CDL license and fill in? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. But we can't just punt this. We got to do something about this.
Ms. Healy, what if we moved this agenda item to information for tonight? If there's some comments that board members would like to make as part of this going forward, we really didn't, at the last meeting, have an opportunity for board members to opine. What if we put it for information? Might be sort of understanding so that if anybody, because you all are bus drivers, and I know you're up at like 5:00 in the morning, not to put it, you know, too late, but maybe there needs to be just some information time for the board to opine, and maybe even to get some more information perhaps from the meeting today. Is that, how about that as an idea?
That's an acceptable amendment to my amendment.
All right, do we want to make that the first information item?
Sure. Sure, 11.01.
That will save us an hour, may perhaps, more. Now, for purposes of the people that are here interested in that, what it means is that it's not before the board to vote on tonight. It is before the board for discussion purposes. And during that discussion, Dr. Kizner, Dr. Chase, and I can talk about the meeting that we attended today and the concerns that were raised, and the approach that, you know, Dr. Kizner is crafting to address it. And also your concern as well, Ms. Healy. All right.
Ms. Healy, prior to the vote, we may also want to move consent to, hold on, I'm sorry, I was trying to multitask. Would we like to move the consent item, especially 9.01, but also 9.02, to...
After awards, perhaps?
After awards.
And before the public hearing and the citizen comments?
Yes.
Just so those that are here for the public hearing and the citizen comments, the consent won't take long, we promise. All right, so the, is that acceptable to?
Yes.
Ms. Young is the second. All right. So the motion is to approve the agenda to remove action item 10.1, and to move it to information item 11.01, and to move consent from action number nine to number five, after awards and recognitions. All right, any discussion, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so we have an agenda, and we have it amended. That brings us to awards and recognitions. The first is Ms. Pamela Cale, Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services. Come on down, Ms. Cale.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. We have something great coming forward. Please come forward when I call your name. Those representing Shirley Heim Middle School? Those representing AG Wright Middle School?
Wait a minute. Mr. Belwright, we know you're powerful, but... That's right. Raquel is strong.
Those representing Rodney Thompson Middle School? And those representing Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School?
Oh, you're all outnumbered. So now I'm losing the Raquel contingent. They're moving down here. Thompson and, you're mine.
In June of 2019, the Virginia Department of Education announced schools in Virginia receiving the 2019 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. Virginia designated 183 elementary and secondary schools. Stafford County is proud to say that we have four of those schools. Congratulations to Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School, AG Wright Middle School, Rodney Thompson Middle School, and Shirley Heim Middle School. In addition, to earn the Board of Education Continuous Achievement Award, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited or accredited with conditions. Additionally, these four schools met the criteria of having a cumulative 10-point increase over three years in the combined rates for reading and mathematics for two or more student groups, with improvement yearly for each group on both indicators. This recognition certainly speaks to the dedication of staff, members, and those four respective schools who are committed to ensuring a high-quality education for all students. Congratulations to these four schools. Please join me in congratulating Kate Waller Barrett, Rodney Thompson, AG Wright.
Let's see how good these high school interns are.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo!
Next, we'd like to recognize Dr. Daniel Horneck, Principal of North Stafford High School.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman, School Board members. Dr. Kizner, we are here to bring forward some of the best of the best that North Nation has to offer. In the spirit of our student-first mentality, could I please have Mr. Thomas Nichols? This young man has an amazing story. For those of you who don't know, he was diagnosed with leukemia at the tender age of five. As his family was dealing with the shock of finding about his diagnosis, they learned about the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Thomas and his family began to raise money for the society, and these efforts became a family and a yearly tradition. Primary fundraising methods included lemonade stands, door-to-door sales, and, as time went on, harnessing the power of social media. He's continued his fundraising efforts every year for the last 12 years. In middle school, the folks who run the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program learned about Thomas and his efforts, and he represented Virginia as a prime example of what it means to be a volunteer. In August of 2019, Thomas and his family eclipsed the $100,000 mark for fundraising. Freelance Star reporters learned about this milestone and reached out to Thomas, and you likely saw an amazing article highlighting his efforts. He was then asked to go on to live radio on News Talk 1230 with Ted Schubel back on September 10th. We are so proud of Thomas. He exemplifies North Nation. And he is also, by the way, our big blue band drum major. He's a goalie on the lacrosse team, and a certified EMT. We could not be more prouder. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Thomas Nichols. I'd like to invite his family as well.
I must also say that this Tom Nichols often gets emails from the other Tom Nichols. So he knows a lot about our school system. Tom.
Okay, so I'm going to, sorry, Sharice, I'm going to have to go off script for this one. Would Mrs. Laura Sly please come down? To describe Laura Sly, I'm going to start with teacher extraordinaire. She works in our freshman transition academy to ensure that all of our students coming from eighth grade into ninth grade have the smoothest possible transition. Last year, when we needed to fix some issues with respect to math scores and some student performance, I asked Laura, "Hey, can you fix this?" Shouldn't surprise anybody in this chamber that she did. Every one of those students passed, walked across the stage, got their ticket to the future, and are ready to tackle the world. Community leader, in the wake of her son AJ's tragic death in 2014, we were all there for her, but what she doesn't know is somehow, in the midst of it, she was there more for us. And her efforts gave us a whole new vocabulary with Sly Strong, and it unified a community. And then, of course, we come to the most recent event, which I'm going to preface with the greatest Laura Sly story that I have of all time, her son Joey, who's now kicking in the NFL for the Carolina Panthers, just so you know. He was at Virginia Tech at the time, and he was finishing his studies in December, but they were still preparing for their bowl game. So once his last final was done, he called Mom and said, "Mom, I'm happy to report that I am no longer a student athlete. I'm just an athlete." And in true Laura Sly manner, to make sure that he stayed grounded and he was preparing for his future, she said to him, quote, "And you're also an unemployed adult." Because you see, in the Sly family, you have to be prepared for what's next. And never more did that come true, most recently here on September 3rd, when we can add another descriptor to Mrs. Sly, lifesaver. As always, she was in the right place at the right time. During the day, one of our North Nation freshmen was choking on a piece of candy. Student approached Mrs. Sly, who jumped into action. There was no time to call for security, admin, or the nurse. She simply was prepared, initiated the Heimlich maneuver, dislodged the candy, and literally didn't say a word about it. Didn't even hear about it for a day or two, because it's just what Laura does. The student and her parents are here tonight, and I would like to invite them down as well. They are incredibly grateful for Mrs. Sly's quick response. This event is just the latest in a career defined by greatness. I cannot put into words how much Mrs. Sly means to me as a teacher, friend, leader, and mentor. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Laura Sly. And a natural segue from lifesaver to life changer. Would Mrs. Kelly O'Connor please come forward? Mrs. O'Connor is in her second year teaching at North Stafford High School, but she's in her 19th year in education. She has taught at numerous high schools and middle schools around the country, and she has been a blessing to have at North Stafford. She is incredibly flexible with what she is able to teach, and willing to work with every student, from the most naturally gifted all the way to ones that need extra assistance. A dual-enrollment English student at North Stafford High School, recently nominated Mrs. O'Connor, our amazing English teacher, for a Life Changer of the Year Award. The student wrote in his nomination packet, quote, "Mrs. O'Connor has been a tremendous mentor to me throughout the college application process, and when I asked Mrs. O'Connor about it, she assisted and proofread and gave feedback on 14 different college applications that he completed." Additional students have supported this sentiment by leaving comments such as, one student said, "Mrs. O'Connor makes sure to go above and beyond what is necessary and required of teachers and her responsibilities." Another student said, "What she, Mrs. O'Connor, teaches fully represents the world we live in today and better prepares us for the road and the world ahead." And finally, another student said, "She cares about her students on a deeply personal level." Mrs. O'Connor exemplifies our core North Nation values, and always goes above and beyond the call of duty for our students. I couldn't be prouder to be here with her tonight as she receives this award. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. O'Connor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Horneck. That brings us to Sergeant Major Alan Tanner, Marine Corps instructor at Mountain View High School.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, Dr. Kizner. Would the Wildcat Battalion please come forward? In only its second year, the Mountain View Marine Corps JROTC program is designated as a Naval Honors School by the Commandant General of Marine Corps Training and Education Command. Selection of this prestigious award means that the Wildcat Battalion is in the top 20% of all Marine Corps JROTC programs globally. Accepting this award this evening is our Cadet Battalion staff. I will introduce them to my left, going to the right. The Cadet Battalion Commander, Cadet Kushner. Cadet Executive Officer, Cadet Russ. Cadet Senior Listener Advisor, Cadet Scott. Cadet S-1 Officer, Cadet Barbie. Cadet S-1 Chief, Cadet Peters. Cadet S-3 Officer, Cadet Hernandez. Cadet S-3 Chief, Cadet Thompson. Cadet S-4 Chief, the S-4 Officer is out practicing football, and the Cadet Chief, Cadet Waters. And I, Supply Chief, Cadet Poe. And I, Cadet Color Guard, is Cadet Knight. Please join me in congratulating the Cadet Wildcat Battalion.
Parents, if you want to move up and take better pictures, you can come up and take better pictures. Don't move until your parents are done.
All right, next we'd like to recognize Ms. Sharice Johnson, Director of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. I am here this evening to thank the community partners that teamed up with the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement to help the Collect for Kids Back to School Supply Drive. Will the following SCPS partners please come forward? Stafford County Parks and Recreation, Stafford County Transportation, B-101.5 Bee Crew and Buzzie, Mount Arid Baptist Church, Taco Tuesday Truck, Rappahannock Orthodontics, Sylvan Learning of Stafford, Stafford Lakes Walmart, Hildrup, Target, Stafford Marketplace, Triton Finit, Train, St. Andrews Orthodox Church, ABM Industries, Rotary Club of Stafford, Liberty Mutual Insurance, Mosquito Authority, Sheriff Decatur, and members of the Stafford County Sheriff's Office, Chalk and Moore, Stafford Crossing Community Church, Outback Steakhouse, Sweet Frog, Central Rappahannock Regional Library, the Give Back Team of Caldwell Banker Elite, Apple Federal Credit Union Stafford, Barnes and Noble, Navy Federal Credit Union, Michael C. Smith State Farm Insurance Agent, American Legion 219, GEICO, Stafford NAACP Youth Council, Staples of Stafford, Singleton Enterprises, Team Velocity, Kumon Stafford West. This event was a huge success. Community Engagement Manager Sharice Taylor led the event, which took place on August 7, 2019, at the Public Safety Center. Approximately 45 volunteers packed over 600 backpacks with school supplies to ensure that all Stafford County public school students have the materials they need to succeed. We couldn't do it without our community partners. The Collect for Kids Back to School Drive is a true community event that involves many organizations who are represented here today, and a few others who could not attend. Thank you Superintendent Dr. Scott Kizner, School Board Member Ms. Pamela Young, and Board of Supervisors Cindy Shelton for attending this event. We would also like to thank our SCPS staff, including the school counselors, teachers, and staff who stuffed the backpacks and assisted with the coordination to make this event a success. The SCPS Department of Transportation provided buses at Karaoke in the Park, National Night Out, Walmart, and Staples Stuff the Bus events. Thank you to Stafford County Government Parks and Recreation for hosting the Karaoke in the Park event, and the Stafford County Sheriff's Department for providing the location as well as moving and accepting school supplies before the event. I would like to say a huge thank you to Operations and Maintenance for moving all of the supplies from the Professional Development Center to the Public Safety Center. Thank you to the anonymous donors that gave school supply donations for SCPS students in need. Again, thank you for your support, and we look forward to many, many more partnerships in the future. Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Hey Johnny Bench, you guys beat my Mets the other day. What's wrong with you? I might take that shirt just for Johnny. How you doing, man? Need a bigger room?
Congratulations to all those receiving awards tonight, and many, many thanks to our community partners. I think Ms. Johnson, you and Ms. Taylor have done an amazing job of harnessing all this generosity that we have in our, in our community, and the students are the beneficiaries. So thank you very, very much. All right, that brings us to the public hearing. Oh, that's right, the consent agenda. All right, we told them that would take a couple minutes. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Hazard. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Kizner, we're just calling on you for any announcements after the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. I have two people I'd like to introduce. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brian Williams. He's our new Director of School Nutrition. Mr. Williams assumes his position after completing 18 years in a similar position at Suffolk County Public Schools, where he oversaw 21 schools. Prior to that, he was in supervisory role at Virginia Beach Public Schools, and also at Delaware State University. He earned his Bachelor's of Science degree in Hotel Restaurant Management from Virginia Tech, woo-hoo, and a Master's of Art in Theological Studies from Liberty University. And he has a lot of credentials. I'm not going to read them, but he's well, well-qualified, and he's going to be a great asset. Thank you.
Welcome.
I think Ms. Fox is here. Ms. Sharice Fox was going to assume the position. Ms. Cherie Fox was going to assume the position of Assistant Principal at AG Wright Middle School. Currently, she's, well, up to a minute ago, she was the coordinator at the Stafford Day School prior to her role. She served as a special education teacher and a donaustition in Stafford. She started her career in Westmoreland Public School. She's been with us since 2003. She has a significant amount of experience in all aspects of special education and differentiating instruction. She received her Bachelor's Degree in Health Sciences from Bridgewater College, a Master's in Education from University of Virginia, and she received her Ed Leadership endorsement from Longwood University. Welcome. Is anybody here with you to introduce?
My husband.
Yeah, 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 I kind of thought that. Hi, husband. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Our new appointees are welcome to stay for the meeting, or if you choose, you are free to go. But we wanted to recognize you before we get into our extended time period here. That brings us to the, the public hearing on the FY '21 Budget Priorities. Now, this is independent from the Citizen Comment Period, in which people are invited to comment on anything they wish to talk about. The public hearing on the fiscal year '21 budget priorities is, is limited to those budget priorities. We have one person who signed up, and that is Paul Waldoski. And before Mr. Waldoski comes forward, Dr. Chase, do you want to read our, or we, we have a little blurb that we read before any of these public comment periods, so.
Individuals wishing to comment about the FY '21 Budget Priorities may do so at this time. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in SPC, SP, SCPS Policy 1113 Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Mr. Waldoski? And if anyone wants to speak about the FY '21 Budget Priorities, please come forward after Mr. Waldoski, and there's a sign up sheet that you can sign after you speak.
Paul Waldoski, 8 Pickett Lane, in the Jerry Mandurk Rock Hill District. I went through the county profile before I came here to speak about the budget priorities, and as the meeting started today, it seems to me one of your key priorities should be bus drivers. One of the key problems that this county has is we have all kinds of traffic issues around our schools. I'm very familiar with Mountain View and Margaret Brent Elementary School. I see bus drivers who drive down my street, and there's no one to pick up. So, if we have this shortage, then we need to examine with the budget aspects and address it. One of the other key things that bums me is every time you want to redistrict, you spend money and you're really not going anywhere. 2021 by law, off the 2020 census, the county has to redistrict, so there might only be five school board members, which I brought up many times before, you each get 12K a year in a stipend. And you also saw tonight in the awards how the community supports school supplies. So, think of that aspect of that's not in your budget priorities. And if it is in your budget priorities, well, you should address it that it's eliminating your expenses. I also love when people tell me about the school growth enrollment. It's not there, folks. You keep on saying the 6th High School. I keep telling you, I've been here 29 years, and my kids are long gone. The cicadas are coming in 2030. Matter of fact, the cicadas came in 2019. It's really amazing, I didn't know that. But if you ever look at the budget overview of the county, the revenue is $573 million, and the expenditure summary comes down to $572 million. So, we stay right in that aspect. But when you take the pie, it says schools and debt service. And I think you need to address the debt service. If you're paying interest, you need to reprioritize, because the money you're wasting in interest could go back into the infrastructure. And you all know what I think about giving everyone a 5% raise. There's those who need it and those who don't.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on the FY '21 Budget Priorities? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and come to citizen comments. Dr. Chase?
So, individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received in any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in SCPS Policy 1113 Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have 10 people who've signed up to address the board, so we'll take those people first, and then when we finish, if anyone else wishes to address the board, you can come forward. The first three speakers are John Cook, Cherie Neal, and Laura Brewer.
My name is John Cook, 120 Oaklon Road here in Stafford, Virginia. And I just want to thank you very much, for each of you, for what you do and your willingness to step in. And I realize that the last few months have been very tumultuous, to be the le, to say the least, in regards to the discrimination clauses. But what I'm really here to talk to you about today, since that vote already has come and gone, is I'm asking you in regards to Item 10.4 on this evening's docket about attorney-client privilege, I would ask that you would waive that tonight. I'm asking that you all would let us know as a community the legal advice that was given to you in regards to these two policies. From an outsider looking in, I can only assume one of two things, that the information that you received from your attorneys was something along the lines of you need to wait on this vote until current legal actions that are in the court system are ruled upon? Or maybe even worse, your attorney said that you are overstepping your boundaries as a school board, your legal boundaries as a school board. Regardless of which way you vote this evening, my final plea is that, that you would not, that you would not implement any changes to the discrimination policies prior to September 10th vote. I am concerned that as a citizen, you are opening up this county and specifically the school board to legal fees and costs that will do nothing but drain the possibilities to enhance our bus drivers that we've been talking about, increasing the pay for our teachers, and upgrades to our buildings. And last of all, if you do include these, or if you choose to move forward, I believe that there's a chance that we will have wasted hundreds of thousands of dollars on possible retrofits for schools that are completely unnecessary, especially if the court system comes in and says that you all have overstepped your legal bounds, and by creating a new discriminated class of people, or protected class of people, excuse me, you've just simply overstated, you've overstretched your boundaries, and we have wasted millions of dollars. Thank you for your time.
Cherie Neal, followed by Laura Brewer.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cherie Neal. I live at 3 Quateroy Court, Stafford. I just want to first start with thanking Dr. Kizner, Dr. Chase, Ms. Healy, as well as Mr. Fulmer for the emergency town hall meeting that was had at Transportation today. Ms. Hollerback, you were referencing in regard to getting bus drivers to, to come into our county. Unfortunately, raising the bus driver pay, it's not going to do it. And the reason we say that is because you have tenured bus drivers that are here, that have heard time and time and time again, as the bus driver pay, the new driver's pay is increased, you guys are going to get it, it's coming, bear with us, it's coming. It, it never comes. And so, therefore, this is the start of my 20th year. If you raise bus driver pay, you're going to have a new bus driver coming in, making just under a dollar less than I do, with zero experience, zero. But I'm here, I've been through the ups and downs for the last 20 years. Not anyone can just drive a school bus. It takes a very special person. With that being said, please forgive me, but I would like to reference what you all unfortunately heard today, if that's okay with you all? Part of the reason we cannot keep school bus drivers is because our children are out of control, out of control. Just last week, I had a young man, I asked him to move out of the aisle. There was a group, and I asked him to move out of the aisle so that I could see out of my back window. And I was called a fucking bitch, and I was also told to suck his dick. This, again, I apologize, this is the, and I'm going to use it, the abuse that the bus drivers receive, and that's just a very mild form of it. And until we address larger issues, don't get me wrong, as I stated to Dr. Kizner and the ladies today, sure, addressing the pay is wonderful, but, because everybody likes a nice paycheck when they have to deal with something horrible. May I continue? Yes.
We don't, well, given the fact that we don't have a whole lot of people on tonight, if the board has no objection, I'd like to allow Ms. Brewer to continue.
I would have been there this afternoon, but I couldn't, so.
We couldn't because we can't have three people with us on notice morning.
Forgive me. And there's bigger issues.
Ms. Neal, I'm sorry. Ms. Brewer is next.
That's okay, it's okay, it's all right. You have to, you've got many of our drivers that are here tonight, our senior drivers. Again, I stand behind, we, we've, we've been there. Until, I, I, I referenced today about how, yes, the pay will, pardon my language, make the bullshit slide down just a little bit easier. And unfortunately, that's the case. Until we address much larger issues, the support, taking control back, nothing is going to change, nothing. You can go out and you can hire all the, all the people you want, but not everybody can drive a bus, not everybody. It takes a very special person to be able to do it. And what's happening is they're going and they're getting these bus drivers, and they're coming in, and they stay for a few months, and then they leave. They go drive a dump truck, or they go to other counties. And again, it, it, it does, although money is not the main problem, it is a significant problem, but there are others that, there's more, it's more in depth than just, let's go get them. Here lately, we've been taking quantity over quality, and it's not fair to the kids. Someone was talking about redistricting. The redistricting, every single bus driver in this county, most of us have had runs, same runs, for years. Not anymore. We have so many children, and we have close to three classrooms on our buses, three classrooms for one of me, one of my fellow drivers, one of us. Until the much bigger issues are addressed, which Dr. Kizner today, we agreed to form a committee to work on getting things done, nothing's going to change. We are busting our humps to get these kids to and from school. And unfortunately, I can tell you, I wouldn't want my children on a bus without a controlled children, to hear that. I, I wouldn't. Many of my fellow drivers have young kids. It's, it's not okay. And like we explained to Dr. Chase, Ms. Healy, and Dr. Kizner, it's deeper. And until we get to the root and have some, nothing's going to change, nothing. October 21st through 25th, I believe, is, is it, I think it's bus driver, there's, it's my understanding that we're going to be having everyone come out on our buses. You need to see the good, and you need to see the bad. And when I say you're going to see the bad, trust me when I tell you, you're going to want to tuck your head and hide. And that's not exaggerating. So, with all due respect, again, I apologize for the language, but that is just a very minor incident of something that, that we deal with, that has to be addressed. Again, thank you very much for today, and I can speak for myself, and I think others. We truly look forward to working with you. We really, really do, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. After Ms. Brewer, Susan Randall, followed by Michelle Wickman.
Hi, Laura Brewer, 6 Darby Wood Court. I'm not really quite sure if I can follow that, but I'll give it a whirl. So, I want to thank you guys for coming today and for orchestrating the town hall meeting, and to thank Dr. Chase, Mrs. Healy, and Mr. Fulmer for attending. Some people say driving a school bus is a thankless job. I'm thankful, thankful for every student I have transported in the past 24 years. All of my kids have become part of my heart. Every thought I have, every decision I make while driving is guided by the knowledge that I am responsible for somebody else's child, somebody else's reason for living. In reference to Item 10.1 on the agenda, I applaud you and your conscientious efforts to attract more school bus driver applicants. New driver pay has increased three times in recent years with no resolution to the driver shortage. Based on the examples given at the meeting earlier today, I hope you can agree that increasing the new driver pay alone- the new driver pay alone is not the solution. Albert Einstein is accredited with the quote, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result. It's time to stop the insanity." Unfortunately, Dr. Kizner inherited a mess referred to as pay banding that was never fully implemented. A fair market, middle ground needs to be found, a pay scale developed and executed. Drivers and monitors across the board are entitled to and deserve equitable pay based on years of experience. We have a driver in their 11th year this year, contracted 11 years, making seventeen forty-eight an hour. We have another driver in their second year being contracted, making seventeen fifty an hour. You do the math. Some drivers have resigned and come back to make more money. I'm not going to reiterate the issues brought up today, as they can't be fixed here now. What I'm going to do is invite each of you, along with the Board of Supervisors, Central Office, and Administrators, to come ride our buses during National School Bus Safety Week, October 21st through 25th. Please take the time to visit more than one bus in several areas throughout the county. I know you will be surprised at the issues we encounter daily, and be equally impressed at our level of professionalism. I appreciate your intent and hope dialogue continues as we move forward together, making Stafford County School Transportation Department one that others can only aspire to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Ms. Randall.
Hi, I'm Susan Randall, 222 Wood Landing Road in the George Washington District. I know this board is working hard and creatively on Ferry Farm, but I still want to share some of my concerns. In August of 2014, five years ago, the headline read, "Grafton Village Has A New School Feeling." The article reviewed the needed and the nice-to-haves throughout the building. They received new HVAC, flooring, lighting, electrical plumbing work, and technology upgrades, and a marquee sign. The budgets ranged for the three renovations between 11.4 and 11.9. That was five years ago. Ned Bomke was quoted as saying, "It brings Grafton into parity with the other elementary schools." One teacher commented, "The trailers were actually nice." What will the headline be after Ferry Farm is complete? Can we say our renovation brings us into parity? Can we say our trailers are actually nice, with no water, bathrooms, or rooms that are connected inside for classes that change classes and will be changing them outside? Falmouth was running dehumidifiers in classrooms and had to go first. There are no more dehumidifiers. Ferry Farm has them, but sadly, the air quality in that wing of the school will not be tested, and the renovation will not touch a single classroom to improve anything. Our middle pink tile hallway with unsafe classroom doors and plumbing problems will get a hall rap. All four schools ahead of us saw renovated new kitchens. We have a fridge that is quote-unquote grandfathered. We should pause at that word. If you're doing a renovation and still can use the word grandfathered, something isn't quite right. We still have cracked asbestos tile being watched. Money was spent on architectural plans, on a design for the rebuild, and what happened to it? It's gone. When the plan changed, many more dollars were spent on an architect and his drawings for four-phase renovation. But on February 19th, Dr. Kizner told the Board of Supervisors that Ferry Farm could do with what they were being given and no more phases or additional dollars. Mrs. Mauer reiterated his statement. There went more dollars out the window, along with half of Phase Two, all of Phase Three, and all of Phase Four. Now our patch school will see a brand-new shiny front. We will get the needed music, art, and library, but nothing for the majority of our classrooms. How are we going to attract the best and brightest to teach at Ferry Farm? I know year-end dollars should work out and may address the HVAC in the kitchens throughout the county, but what about our grandfathered appliances that are used to house food for staff and students? What about our cracked asbestos tiles? What about the annoying humming dehumidifiers in our 4th and 5th grade wing? All of the classrooms. I know we're getting started, late getting started, and unlike every other school, we're not starting and ending with the start and end of a school year. I will say the ability to take every blow on the chin like a champ award goes to the staff at Ferry Farm. Any change, disappointment, and promises have been handled like true professionals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. After Michelle Wickman, Britton Carter, and Dana Brown.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kizner, my name is Michelle Wickman. I reside at 305 Bentley Court in Hampton Oaks. I'm also a teacher at North Stafford High School. I'm speaking today on multiple points. Actually, the first is regarding bus driver compensation. I really appreciate that you've recognized that we have a serious problem that needs action now. Our drivers are grossly underpaid and overworked, yet they continue to do their best every single day because they have too much integrity to do any less. But continually asking the drivers of Stafford County to do more with less and do it without appropriate compensation is a practice that's not sustainable if we want to attract new drivers and retain experienced ones. However, giving a larger increase to those with less experience causes tension between experience levels, and it makes those who have demonstrated long-term loyalty to Stafford County feel undervalued. We saw evidence of this with the market adjustments to the teacher pay scale in recent years. So I am glad that you've made the decision to pull it tonight in favor of a better plan. I hope that you'll work towards a fair solution that doesn't leave any group of drivers feeling that we don't value the sacrifices they make every day. Now I'm going to put my mom hat on to speak about post-redistricting issues. I believe you're talking in 11.06. As I stated, I live in Hampton Oaks. Precisely, I live in the town home section. And in the last middle school redistricting, the towns of Hampton Oaks were rezoned to Stafford Middle School, which is six miles away. This seems ridiculous when you know that HH Pool Middle School, which we were previously zoned for, along with the rest of the neighborhood, is just 2.3 miles down the road. This issue was further complicated by the recent elementary redistricting, which leaves the entirety of the Hampton Oaks subdivision going to Hampton Oaks Elementary School, HH Pool Middle School, and North Stafford High School, except for the townhomes, which still bust to Stafford Middle. So the kids in our little section are all attending Hampton Oaks, then they're separated from their classmates and traveling nearly three times the distance for middle school, only to have any relationships at Stafford Middle severed three years later so they can go back to North Stafford High School. I am fortunate that my daughter has been able to attend HH Pool on a waiver, but I'm still responsible for getting her to and from school. She's able to ride the bus in the morning from north to HH Pool, but because of the driver shortage and transportation issues, her route is long, so she rides for almost an hour to get 2.3 miles to her school from north. There isn't a bus that returns to north in the afternoon either, so coordinating how she gets home is often different, depending on the day. According to student enrollment projection updated in August, HH Pool will be under 90% capacity for the foreseeable future, so I urge you to consider the detrimental impact of these redistricting decisions to the students in our little section of the neighborhood, and I would hope that you return the towns of Hampton Oaks to HH Pool next year. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm here tonight to bring to your attention an issue with the towns of Hampton Oaks. I am also a resident of Hampton Oaks. I live at 110 Bentley Court. And my daughter will, when she gets to that age, she would, as of right now, attend Stafford Middle School, while the rest of the single-family homes of Hampton Oaks would attend HH Pool. When you tell people you live in Hampton Oaks, those from the area usually say, are you from the pool side or the school side? The townhomes tend to be the forgotten middle child. They were seemingly forgotten at the last middle school redistricting, when we were moved from HH Pool to Stafford Middle. Even longtime residents were not aware of this change, until last year, when the redistricting occurred for elementary schools and maps were poured over. That is when many learned of this change. And quite honestly, when you look at Stafford Middle and you look at the boundaries, you kind of go, what happened here? The boundaries for Stafford Middle tend to make little sense. Hampton Oaks Elementary is now made up of three areas. It's Akua Harbor, Hampton Oaks, and Shadow Woods. In middle school, Akua Harbor would attend Shirley Heim. The single-family homes of Hampton Oaks would attend HH Pool, and the townhouses of Hampton Oaks, along with Shadow Woods, would attend Stafford Middle School. Essentially, three APUs of students that would attend Hampton Oaks Elementary would be moved to Stafford, would attend Stafford Middle. I urge the members of the board to take a close look at many areas where neighborhoods are now split for middle school. That was an important criteria for the elementary redistricting. Middle school should be no different. The middle child of Hampton Oaks will not be forgotten. We fought along with our neighbors last year to be unified at Hampton Oaks. We will fight again to remain at HH Pool unified. Thank you.
All right, after Ms. Brown, Paul Waldowski, Adella Bertoldi, and Tim Whitley.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. And just off the top real quick, my daughter occasionally rides Bus 97. Everything is great. Not having any issues. The bus is not overcrowded. It shows up when it's supposed to. Just wanted to get that out there. I'm here tonight to ask you to go ahead and waive attorney-client privilege specifically pertaining to the opinion and the analysis on the no discrimination policy. It seems to me, you know, I'm not an attorney, but if the attorney-client opinion was not requested as a result of active litigation or current, you know, litigation, and it was only informational, it seems that you would waive privilege, because that lends itself to your stated policy of being open and transparent. You guys actively delayed a vote on this policy over the summer so that you all could have an opportunity to ask the attorney questions. It just seems really odd that four members that voted for the new policy want to keep the legal opinion and analysis a secret, and the three that voted against it want to share the legal opinion and analysis. It just makes it look suspicious. Just please release it, otherwise it looks like you're hiding something. Further, complicating the issue, I believe a couple of you who voted not to release it leaked it to members of the SEA and to the public. Unfortunately for you, at least one of them had the poor taste to talk about it online. So now that poses the question, does this mean attorney-client privilege has already been waived by default? And then on a separate issue, not pertaining to that, it's come to my attention that one of the new school board member candidates is violating Policy 1115, no campaigning in our school buildings. The policy passage specifically reads, quote, "The board prohibits campaigning in its school buildings by individual candidates and/or parties for local, state, and federal elections, except during all candidate forums and as may be other authorized by law." The incident took place recently at Stafford High. I'd like to see a copy of the reprimand letter, and if one has not been issued, I'd like to know why, and if there's a conflict of interest with the superintendent. Thank you.
Paul Waldowski, 8 Picket Lane. Now, I would like, you know, six minutes or nine minutes, but I do appreciate the bus drivers. But let me give you a couple of aspects. You know, whereas Waldo, he's 32 years old, and he still wears red, white, and blue, so that's the change you really want. I don't like waivers of any kind. It's called favoritism. That's why Lady Justice wears a blindfold, to be fair and transparent. Yes, you are hiding something. I never even came to that meeting. I watched it on TV, and I won't even get into that aspect. But I want to support those bus drivers, and you need to realize that every career has the apprentice, the journeyman, and the master bus driver. I heard two of them. One was 20 years and 24 years, and that sounded to me like master carpenters to me. And if you're treating the apprentice at seventeen forty-eight or seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour, and they have to quit, then you don't have an issue, you have an opportunity. And I keep telling elected politicians, there are no issues, there are opportunities. And I believe you have 1,461 days, and I urge each of you to get out and vote on November 5th, 2019, because that's 41 days away, because that's the only way you make change. Many of you were in Davis County when they purged the whole Board of Supervisors. It was just really amazing how all of them lost. It was a really neat thing, because it made people readdress and do things. Always remember, Waldo wears red, white, and blue. He's an independent. I'm not campaigning. Republicans wear red. They're dominating this county. They're just part of a whole system. The Democrats wear blue, but Waldo wears red, white, and blue, like our independents, because he's open-minded. And I'm providing solutions to each of you. Change is what's in my white pocket, and I earn it. And so do every one of these people who get up every day. And like I said earlier, I urge each of you that have given speeches today, you should have come up for the budget priorities, because you all have really great ideas. Humming dehumidifiers? Come on. Grandfathers? That's what I am. But I'm the grandfather over Waldo's. And hopefully someday, I'll win more than 40% of the vote.
Good evening, Adella Bertoldi, 10 Kingsley Court, Stafford, Virginia. So I'm here talking about the attorney-client privilege and the waiver thereof regarding the policy. And I know that in the last meeting, there was some confusion with respect to some of the school board members on what that meant for future and the such. And I must say, just because I am a lawyer, that I need to make it very clear that anything that I say here tonight is not, should not be considered legal advice, because I am not giving legal advice. I'm here as an individual, as a mother of a child who's in the Stafford County school system. And I was looking up, you know, this particular issue with respect to school boards, and, you know, found law review articles and the such. And I want to bring a couple of things up to the board, and I think need to be looked into and addressed and considered. When there is joint representation, and whether or not the school board is joint representation, I think needs to be looked into, but I think there is an argument that they can be. When that is the case, a joint client may waive the privilege with respect to their own communications with that joint lawyer. So what would that mean? If each one of you submitted questions, and the attorney asked those questions, there may be an argument, and I suggest, and I am encouraging, especially the board members who have wanted to be transparent and to get the answers to their questions out there, to look into whether or not they can have their particular questions released with the attorney's answers to your particular questions, as long as, according to the articles that I read, you, you know, don't violate the privilege of other board members. Again, whether or not that applies on the joint representation is left to debate, and I suggest that that might be something to be looked into. The other thing is, is Dillon Rule came to my mind, because the other bone of contention I brought up last time I was here was the fact that you are the elected officials who we, as your constituents, elected to make policy, not Dr. Kizner. And Dillon Rule is very specific that you cannot authorize the change of the law and give up your particular rights for others to make those decisions. Whether or not Dillon Rule applies here, I don't know with respect to the school board, but I think that that is a valid question on whether or not that the policy can actually, you can actually divulge your own rights to make public policy, which is what you are here to do and what you were elected by us to do, in the hands of somebody else. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Whitley is the last speaker who signed up, so if there's anyone who would like to address the board, after Mr. Whitley, please line up and come forward when he finishes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tim Whitley. I live at 109 Healy Court in the townhomes of Hampton Oaks. But first- But first, I'd like to support the bus drivers here. My sixth grader came home from Stafford Middle School the other day, saying that one of the parents had berated a bus driver. He was an hour late. The day before that, he was 30 minutes late. We had no notification of either of those incidences. I don't blame that parent for being upset, but that, but again, the abuse that the bus drivers take, both from children and parents, is part of the problem here. And I will tell you from my experience that another part of the problem seems to be an issue of management. As a manager of large groups of people, I know what it is to hire and retain staff. You all I am grateful for, for y'all being here and for the job that you're committed to do. But if you don't have significant management experience, maybe some of that should be outsourced to some extent. Because only through good management are you going to be able to recruit, hire, and retain the people that we need. And having worked for Fairfax County Public Schools, I can tell you that that was their ultimate solution, because they had exactly the same problem. Now, getting to Hampton Oaks. The two ladies who addressed this issue before me were very eloquent and very on-point with what they said. I want to go to a little bit of a deeper issue. When we raise and educate our kids, we are all part of a community. When we allow our children to go to an elementary school for six years, invest in the community of that elementary school, and then strip them of every relationship that has been nurtured for those six years by moving them to a school that is six miles away instead of two miles away, we're not doing our jobs. It's as simple as that. Regardless of how grateful I am for what y'all do do, we are failing the students when we take away that sense of community and that continuity. We all know that going into middle school can be a trying time for a young person. Why would we do that to them? Why would we take, take away the friendships that they've had and nurtured for all these years and put them in a comfortable position? I can also tell you that, other than my child, none of those children who live in Hampton Oaks are engaged in any extracurricular activities before or after school. Why? Because to get there early during rush hour, you got to go through Courthouse Road with all the commuter lots and all the lights, and it can take 40 minutes. Same thing coming home at night. And again, that goes to our sense of community, right? We need to invest in what's best for the child. I know y'all have numbers y'all got to think about, but no number is, means more than that one child, let alone a whole community of children. So I'm asking that you just not reconsider this move, but it needs to be changed, or you have failed at your jobs.
All right, with the other speakers who come up, please give us your name and address before you start, and when you finish, sign with you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kizner, Madam Chair, my name's Terry Potter. I'm in the Falmouth District. I'm the chairperson for the SEA Transportation ESP Caucus. In other words, your bus drivers are monitors. I want to thank Dr. Kizner, Chairman Haley, Dr. Chase, and Chris Fulmer for coming to Transportation this morning. We appreciate you wanting to listen to our concerns, and we look forward to working with you to find long-term solutions to the driver shortage problem. First, I think we can all agree, we need to be competitive at the entry level to get them in the door. But just raising the starting pay does not show the veteran drivers that you value their loyalty and experience. Driving a school bus is a tough business, and our drivers should be compensated for their hard work and dedication. We have students that do not listen, are disrespectful, and actually call their bus drivers every name under the sun. We have parents boarding buses, yelling and cursing at our drivers. I'm one of them. On top of all of that, we have Stafford traffic to deal with. While we need to be competitive with Prince William Respotsey, increasing starting pay may make us competitive at the entry level. You're leaving your veteran drivers feeling slighted and unappreciated. How competitive are we at the five, 10, 15, or even 25-year level of experience? As a driver trainer with 25 years of experience, with the 5% increase this year, I make $22.09. If I were to go north to Prince William County, I would enter their pay scale at the 16-plus level and could be paid $26.70 an hour. That's $4.61 cents per hour more. For my 6.5-hour-a-day contract, I would make $30 more a day, or $5,394 more a year. We do not even have a pay scale that makes any sense. We have drivers with the same number of years of experience but make different hourly pay. If I were to call up Stafford Transportation and ask what a 25-year driver would make, what would you tell me? Would you even know how to find out the answer to my question? I can't make heads or tails of our so-called pay scale. With the start of the school year this year in August, how much money was spent on air-conditioning the schools with temps outside ranging from 90 to 95 degrees daily for nearly three weeks straight? It was said that if we start early, you would retrofit buses with air conditioning. Between the bottles of water and the heat, and the heat, my little kids were getting off the bus looking like they had just gotten out of the pool. They were soaked in sweat and water that was being sprayed on them, spilled on them, or outright poured on them. We also need to consider our monitors. Some of our buses can't roll without their right-hand man or woman. We do appreciate that you are trying to solve the driver shortage. However, by increasing the starting pay and not recognizing your veteran drivers for their experience and loyalty is not good enough. A pay increase should be equitable across the board. It's the only fair way to compensate your drivers and monitors. Thank you for moving Agenda Item 10.01 to information so that we can come up with some common-sense solutions to keep the wheels on the bus going round and round. Thank you.
Terry. Ms. Potter, hello. We need you to sign in when you finish. Thank you.
Hi, how are you all? My name's Katrina Baton, and I'm at 46 Don's Way in Stafford. And I'm a parent of this beautiful six-year-old, and we moved to Stafford because of your school systems. It's been an issue with the buses, and as of Friday, he's now going to be a car rider, because like they said, and thank you so much, all you bus drivers that are here, it's just not safe for anyone on the school buses. The kids are talking about the kids in the back jumping up, punching each other in the head, the little ones crawling under the seats, even, and the little bit of research that I did in the last three weeks that he's been involved in the bus system. There's been stories on Fox News last year about issues, the video that went viral with the girl with all the kids on the school bus. Whatever it takes, please listen to your bus drivers, please listen to your experienced teachers. I moved to Stafford for the schools, and I don't want to have to leave Stafford because of the schools. Thank you.
This is a quick comment, really quick, because we all really support you all. We really do, right? One of the numbers issues seems to be money, as always, right?
Excuse me, sir, we, we haven't finished our public comment period.
Oh, sorry, I thought you didn't.
We, no, we, we have people lined up. But you're welcome to submit, you know, any remarks that you want to the clerk, and she can make them part of the record.
All right, well, you've got a county full of parents, right, who are willing to go on the line and pay more money to help you do your job. Use.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening, George Schlegel, 35 Wincott Lane, Stafford, Virginia, in the never-ending Brook Road construction zone. Okay, I did not make it to the town hall today because I was training a potential new How can we hire new people at this rate who see 20-year drivers making less than a dollar more than they do? What is their incentive to stay? A dollar in 20 years? At one point, we could say, well, Spotsylvania pays more, but they only give you four hours a day. Now, they pay more, and that four hours a day is more than we take home with six and a half hours a day. So we can't keep people. We need to take care of the people that we have, and then we need to get new people in. If the pay increase for new drivers went in without any addition to existing drivers, I would be making 90 cent more an hour than the people I train. I really appreciate you coming by Transportation today. I wish I could have been there to voice my opinions there. And I do want to thank you for everything that you do for us. And I'm not going to be, because I'm not going to be up here that long, because I need to go home and go to bed, because 4:30 comes early. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Rachel O'Meara-Paddock, and I am in Hartwood District. I'm also a teacher here in Stafford County. I was not planning on speaking tonight, but I really felt compelled to come, first of all, and say thank you to all of our bus drivers, whether you're new in the county, whether you've been here for years. We appreciate everything you do. As an educator in this district and as a Stafford County parent, I can tell you, I have two children that attend Colonial Forge High School. They do not ride the bus, because the bus has no seats. My son, both of them, would wind up sitting on the floor from Stafford Lakes Neighborhood to Colonial Forge. Not safe. So instead, I got my 16-year-old a driver's, well, he got his driver's license, and I bought him a new car so that he could transport himself and my other son to school every day. I'm a teacher. I am at school until between 4:15 and 4:30 every day, because our bus routes run so late, because our bus drivers are working so hard. Again, I'm a teacher. I have parents in my classroom who have decided to not allow their child to ride the bus for an hour from Hampton Oaks to wherever they live in our new redistricted area, I believe they live in the harbor, because it takes an hour for the child to get home, and the child cannot tolerate at six, that hour-long bus ride to get home. It is becoming extremely prevalent in this county to have problems, whether it's in the schools themselves, with our educators and retaining educators, or if we're retaining bus drivers and getting new bus drivers in, and it's time to do something about it. So I'm really glad that you met with the bus drivers today, but just from a parent and an educator, there are huge problems, because if I'm only one and have had three issues, that's pretty big odds. Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing I'm, will close the public comment period and come to the board for board reports and comments? Do we have any board committee reports?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Young.
Hello. So the FAB, which is the Finance and Budget Committee, that's our group. But the board met on the 27th of June to discuss the projects and place them in priority order as a draft. On August 24th, the board reviewed the draft and suggested edits. The FAB met on September the 9th, reviewed the accomplishments for FY 20. We looked at salary and market enhancements. We looked at bus driver salary increases and recruitment. Unfortunately, FAB came up with the plan, and it's going to take us some more time to unpack the issues since, you know, we met, our colleagues met with the bus drivers. So we have, school safety is another priority that remains on our list. There was, we also discussed a conversion of bathrooms. This list was sent to all the board members. Newer schools already have unisex bathrooms, and other schools just created one. The board had another work session on September the 17th, where we discussed the CIP. That large CIP list was sent across the street to the Board of Supervisors with high school number six and elementary number 18 as priorities. I sent an email out to the board for additional ideas, and I received some of those. And it includes, let me see, ELL and ESI, so basic, ESL. So basically, English as a second language and the support that they need, there are different levels, so we need to make sure that we distinguish the, between the two and the tiers. So we also need to look at the ones that need to wait several years so that they could get matching funds from the state. So we need to make sure that we support those schools. I'm looking at Dr. Kizner. So that's more work that needs to be done in that area also, so that, you know, we need to look at those tiers. Continue the initiative, class size reduction for free and reduced lunch, for those that don't meet that three-year, that need, the three years that they need to qualify. Also, safety, we had a safety work session today, closed doors, so that is also on our list, very, very important to keep our kids safe. And of course, continue to keep salaries competitive, administrative assistance, they need a higher scale. And my pet peeve, or it's not a pet peeve really, but we need more counselors in the state. The state mandates those, but we just need higher numbers of those. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Young. All right, legislative.
I'll defer my comments till we get to the agenda item. I'll just hit the highlights there. I think it's easier.
All right, thank you. No other committee reports? That brings us to board member comments. Ms. Egan, do you want to start us?
I'll defer.
Mr. McCosker.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Good comments tonight by all. We have some work to do with, with bus driver para-professional pay scales. You know, I still, you know, I, I made a lot of votes over eight years, and there's not many that I said, boy, I wish I didn't make that vote. Boy, I wish I didn't make the cell phone vote, say no every time to cell phones in schools. I wish I didn't say, you know, I'm not going to change that vote. I wish I didn't change the vote where I said, you know, start the school early with the, with the buses, with no air conditioning, and all the things that go, I'm not going to change that vote either. You know, saying no to early start, because the costs didn't outweigh the benefits. And the list goes on and on and on. There's not a vote that I've made that, over my time here, that I, that I would change. And I'll tell you, every year, we fight in that room back there about budget priorities, and we're going to see budget priorities tonight. And we talk about para, we talk about bus driver and monitor pay, and it always slides to not giving them enough money, in my opinion, over the years. And we've, I've said it over and over and over again, but it always seems that other stuff comes up until the brakes are, the buses, you know, the wheels on the bus are not going round and round, and, and then it all comes to a screeching halt. So we got two super candidates for my position, you know, both of them in the audience tonight, Susan Randall and Carol Hume-Metwar, you know, for this position, and I hope, you know, they're both professionals, and I hope when they get into this seat, they continue to fight for the service employees as well as the teachers. Because I'll tell you, just as much as the teachers can make a school come to a halt, the service employees can as well. And, and that's, that's for sure. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Dr. Chase.
So it was wonderful yesterday to attend the ribbon-cutting for the North Star Early Childhood Education Center. It was great to see supervisors Meg Bomke, Cindy Shelton, and Jack Cavalier there. This project is really a great example of our two boards working together for the good of the children in Stafford County schools. And we had a surprise visitor, First Lady Pamela Northam. Early childhood education has been one of her top initiatives since getting, since her husband became governor, and so she stopped by to bring attention to this. I want to thank Kathy Massey and her team at North Star and Rising Star, and Cherie Johnson and her team in Communications for organizing such a really lovely, wonderful celebration. I'd also like to thank the PTA and PTO representatives for coming out last week. In the process of that meeting, the president of the Moncur PTA mentioned they have nine first-year teachers who needed help building their classroom libraries. I had some books I was getting rid of, so I stopped by yesterday and was really happy to get a tour of the school and see that it's coming together. And sometimes my constituents are interested in what's going on in the schools, and one of the things I learned is that Moncur has implemented a house system similar to what goes on in the Harry Potter books. And I just thought that was really a great way to build community at a school that has children coming from all over different places, right? That this is the first year that that school has had many of the students who are there. So I was really, really pleased to see that. Last Thursday, I was at the CGS governing board meeting. The director and staff have been working very hard to standardize homework loads across the six CGS sites. I also learned that AP test scores can now be used instead of SOL scores. I also learned that AP test scores can now be used instead of SOL scores. So if a student gets a two on an AP exam, it's considered a pass. If they get a three or higher, it's considered a pass advance. And that's great for our students, because it'll be fewer tests. But interestingly, AP scores are not available until mid-July, and the SOL scores are sent to the Commonwealth at the end of the school year. So Dr. Benson from King George County noted that that may have an effect on how early we get accredited, because you'll be waiting for the students who take AP exams to get their scores back in mid-July. So that was sort of interesting. Finally, the director would like to make an adjustment to the requirements to get the governor's school seal on a student's diploma. She wants to add a requirement that students have a passing grade on their culminating research course. And so this will be coming to the next board meeting for information, and then action following that meetings, in the following meetings. So please reach out to your constituents for their input. And then, yeah, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Young.
Well, Dr. Chase said it all. So North Star, that was great yesterday, and we had fun. I also want to thank all the volunteers that came out to the committees, and I know they come from long ways, commuters on one, and so it takes some strength to be there, so I, I really truly appreciate all of them. I'm on two of those committees this year, so I'll be seeing you all, running in one and coming out the other. And that's all I have, I'll just keep it short.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard.
Many of my points have been covered. I just would like to mention the Fine and Performing Arts Art Show is this week, on Thursday. As you see, all of our wonderful artwork throughout the building, they are, of course, from the best artists ever, our students, so those go up every year. It's one fun welcoming the artists in, in every year. So if you're ever here, make sure you look at the walls, because we have wonderful things posted. Just to hit the PTO, PTA input, that's always thank you to those leaders in our schools. You are such an important part of what we do, and we really welcome your partnership. North Star opening has been covered, it was amazing. It's wonderful to see that vision finally reached. But I would say, with all the excitement, and I love that building, I do think we, as a board, at some point are going to have to reexamine the Melchers Building as we move forward. I, I do think we may want to move that on to our CIP in the, in the future, and I neglected to bring that up before, so I do apologize, but I think when I was there, I felt very, I don't know, it sort of slapped me in the face, to be honest, that we maybe need to look at that. I'll reserve my comments about, my comments on the bus drivers till we get to the information item, and just saying to all of our high schoolers, I know the homecomings are up, be safe, be good on the roads, and we want you all here for the rest of your year, and especially your senior year. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I think you all covered all the meetings. I'd forgotten how busy we've been the past two weeks. I wonder we're so tired at, at night. It was quite a surprise to see the governor's wife at, at North Star yesterday, very pleasant surprise, and I actually enjoyed reading in the, the Freelance Star about her background as, as a science teacher, and how involved she's been in education. And clearly, the, the early childhood education is of great interest to Mrs. Northam, and we very much appreciate her, her coming, and, and all our people that were there as well. Quite a few of our families and our, our students were there to help celebrate, and the best part was Mrs. Massey cutting the, the ribbon with all the little kids there. I can't wait to see those pictures. Also wanted to, to thank Dr. Kizner for allowing us to come to the meeting today. When he told me he was going to be meeting with Transportation, I asked if, you know, if it would be possible for, for me to come, and then, you know, he opened that invitation, and then I extended my invitation to Dr. Chase, and the, the reason for that is so that we could hear firsthand. I mean, we were there to listen, and, and I think we certainly heard a lot of what was said, and I think it goes a long way in being able to, to move forward. And, and really, Dr. Kizner, I'm sure he's got his cards that he asked everybody, he used the adjective, yes, it's, I'm, I'm not sure I could repeat it correctly, so I won't repeat it, but anyway, he, he actually, he was, he was somewhat joking, but he was serious. He brought these little index cards that he wanted people to fill out and express their concerns, whether they had expressed them or not, or any suggestions. And he ended the meeting on a positive vote, and note, the, the final thought was, we're here because we love the kids. That, that, that was summed it all up about the bus drivers, notwithstanding the abuse, and, and I had no idea. I had no idea that there was abuse of our bus drivers. And that concerns me greatly. So I'm, I'm sure Dr. Kizner's going to be following up. As I mentioned, as somebody, the school board has two employees, that's Dr. Kizner and Missy, Ms. Hall. So they work for us, everybody else works for the superintendent, but we will be, we will be sharing the information with our board in open meetings, and we couldn't have more than two of us there without having announced it three days ahead, and, you know, inviting, you know, anybody who wants to come in to come in, and there wasn't that much room left in that room. But anyway, thank you for, for having us, and, and your voices will be not forgotten. Also wanted to talk about the, the implementation plan for the policies that were adopted by this board at the last meeting. I think everybody knows, I was disappointed that the board did not choose to retain approval authority on that implementation plan. Indeed, it was left with the superintendent with the, what was it, input and, and review of, of the board. And Dr. Kizner has reached out, we've received, you know, emails inviting us to meet one-on-one or two-on-two with him to give our input. And I would like to publicly ask Dr. Kizner to reconsider that and have the board give input in a public meeting. I think that the matter is of great interest, great concern to our public, to our community. And the fact that our input is, is being sought is important, but I would like to know what my fellow board members, you know, are saying, because I can't respond if I don't hear it. And it's one thing for us to meet individually, or, you know, two-on, two-on-one with you, but that doesn't give us the benefit as a board of hearing the input from all the members. So that, I have not discussed this with other board members, but I, it would be important to me. And I think in the interest of transparency, in the interest of sharing this, and keeping the public, you know, up to date and aware, you know, of what's going on, I, I think it's something that we owe to the public. I also would consider, you know, ask you to consider having a public hearing, having an open forum, whether you want to call it a town meeting, I, what do we call those things that we? Town hall, where we, you, you go out and listen, or, or a formal public hearing to get input from the public? Because I think that there is an interest, I think it's very clear that this, this community cares very much about every single child in our school system. That came across loud and clear to me. But they also have an interest on, you know, how we're going to be moving forward. So that, that would be my request, and I, I know you wanted to do this in October, there still could be time, but to, to do this meeting individually, or even in groups of two with the board, does not give us the benefit of hearing the input. Now, I know you have, from this board, the final authority on that, but I would ask as, as, as a community member, as a member of this community, that that be something that, you know, that be open and, and available for anyone that wants to, to sit in to listen, or also to provide input. So that's all my comments. Thank you. Brings us to the superintendent's comments.
Okay, I do have a few comments today. Just to follow up on the PTO, PTO, PTA meeting, tomorrow, and I'll send a copy to the board, I've been working with our staff to address the major questions or major issues that the PTO brought up, mulch, playground equipment, furniture, and so on, shade, and things like that, just to give them an answer, but also give them a process. So for example, if they're purchasing something, work with Chris, we may be able to get a better price, make sure we're following the procurement procedure and so on. We are going to pilot a, a program at North Stafford High School in Phoenix, an evening program. We have children who have discontinued their education, dropped out. These children, they're young adults, to be honest, they're 18 and older, well, actually 16 and older. Give them another opportunity, and hopefully they'll be successful. Some of these students are just one or two credits away from graduating. They have jobs during the day, they, they have a life priority that they must do, and so we'll, I think we're going to start it in a couple of weeks. I do want to talk a little bit about a lot of the issues that you're talking about, just so you know how I kind of think of things. I kind of think of things more as a system change and not individual changes. So I heard about Hampton Oaks today, I heard about lake buses, I hear about, you know, these middle school islands, the pay scale, which I would just tell you, it's easy for me to say this, because I wasn't here and I thank people, I don't know how long I still get away with this thing like you inherited, but there's a point in time where I've learned in leadership, if there was a mistake made, you don't keep trying to, like, make that mistake better, because you try this to say, okay, we tried our best, we have new information, and it doesn't appear to be working. We hear this about the bus drivers, you could talk about administrative assistance, you could pick your, your, your service group, in a sense, and that pay scale, I know it's new, we just had to study, but honestly, I've never personally have seen a, a document that's so remarkably confusing, and secondly, we can't implement. So that creates a lot of angst among our staff, because we, they see something, they're smart, they can read it, and then what we're actually able to do is not anything close to it. So going back to the system things and transportation, I've talked to Barry about this a couple of times, I've talked to a lot of my colleagues, especially colleagues in larger school systems, to see, okay, you know, we just want to say right now, we just, and, you know, and I respect greatly the input that we got today in letters, you know, our transportation challenge might be, we just need more drivers. Well, that might be true, or it might be other things also, like looking at our routes, looking at our grade configurations that we have on, on the, on the buses. There's a lot of things that we need to look at before we conclude that just having more drivers are going, is going to be the answer. I know where I live, just to give an example, I actually had a parent tell me this, where I live on my corner, this parent has a preschool child, an elementary school, middle school, and high school. Four buses come to pick up their kids. Four buses. I've talked to a lot of school systems that do it differently. I'm not making any suggestions, I'm just suggesting we need somebody out, I'm not a huge fan of consultants, but in this case I am, somebody who has a lot of experience in large transportation models, to spend time evaluating the way we're doing it, and be able to offer the board other ways to think about it. Because right now, I think the issue is much greater than just having additional drivers. So I, I want to make sure I get that, that point out there. And again, you know, we heard tonight, and I know you guys mentioned briefly during your elementary redistricting, that there will be a time we'll have to look at middle school. And I think, again, you can't do that in isolation of your bus routes. Okay? So that's why I'm just going, going to work with you to try to give you the information that you need to maybe look at things more holistically than just in piecemeal. Besides that, I know as a school board member and often a superintendent, we just tend to hear things that are not working. I do want to remind everyone that we have 33 sites, and there's a lot of good things that are taking place. And I talked to Cherie the other day, and, and, and our chiefs of elementary, middle and high school, we need to do a more effective job of promoting the things that are doing really well. Tonight was a great example, but we, of, of highlighting our successes. The community values the school systems, we've heard now for three weeks in a row, they want to be a partner with us in our quest, and this is how I'm going to end it. So last week, when we met with the PTO people, we thought we had $200,000 for furniture, 200,000. Remember, they talked about this furniture. We only have $150,000 for furniture. I could share with you, just to furnish maybe five classrooms, that will take you 150,000. We cannot lose sight of, nor should we, of our per pupil expenditure. We are just kidding ourselves to believe that doesn't have impact. And I know there are people that come up here and tell us how we should do things differently. They also tell us that we're spending money, and we have too much money, and we're spending it the wrong way, and they actually make those comments to our elected officials. I am telling you unequivocally, that a lot of the challenges that we have, from salaries that they deserve, to better furniture, more mulch, better technology, is due to our per pupil expenditure. Do not kid yourself. If we were just other school systems north and south of us, we would have 15 to 40 million dollars more. So I hope in our budget deliberations, and I know you have that as one of our goals, that we will really see this as a priority. Thank you for letting me ramble a little bit.
Thank you. That brings us to our action items. The first action item is approval of the Infrastructure 3R listing. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Motion by Mr. McOscar. Second by Ms. Young. Discussion.
Ms. Healy, I, but I want to give the motion makers first. No? Okay, okay, well, usually we do.
Did you want to say anything, Mr. McOscar, Ms. Young?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Last December 4th, we moved some items in order to be able to do Ferry Farm Elementary. One of those projects was to repair the track at Mountain View High School. I do not see this project on this list to be bonded. Maybe it is somewhere else, but I do see that the repair, the interior finishes at HH Pool is on our 3R list. Although I grudgingly, I just need to make sure that that project is covered, because how this was done was that project was to slide, and I believe it's supposed to be near the top of the list, and maybe the, the copy I have doesn't have it, but I really did look.
No, it's actually this spring, so it's in FY 20, so it wouldn't be on this list.
Okay, however.
So it's approved, Mr.?
We would borrow the money in the spring, so we just borrowed the money for, like, Ferry Farm with the fall bar, so it's on the spring bar for, with VPSA proceeds.
Okay.
So this is starting in the fall and spring of FY 21.
This is 21, so.
Correct. That's not the current year, yeah.
But I just wanted to clarify, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't want to interrupt, but so, so Mountain View High School track is getting done now, on the, and it will be part of the fall bar, or, I'm sorry, the spring bar.
Spring bar to be done over the summer.
Okay.
Could, could we have a, a breakout of what is supposed to be in the spring bar? Not tonight, but, Mr. McOscar, you may also be interested in seeing what is in that, in that piece, and I just, just wanted to make sure, because that was something that we spent some time. I also wanted to just ask, that AG Wright project that was ABA compliant, and the Board of Supervisors kind of didn't approve it, I'm hoping at some point that will be, come back, because remember, they kicked it back, saying it was not within the scope. That was, I thought, a safety or a compliance issue. I'm not going to hold up the list tonight, but I just want to make sure that piece of that project does not get lost.
All right, I'll look into that, too.
I appreciate it.
And, Dr. Kizner, could you just send us that in, in a memo? We won't have to wait till the next meeting to get that answer. Thank you. Mr. McOscar, did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
Dr. Chase?
So I, I, last year, asked for this list to also be sort of sorted, it's a spreadsheet, sorted by school, so that you could kind of see that, because I think that's useful. Sometimes board members feel like a particular school isn't getting the love, and seeing it by school gives you a little feel for just how much funding is being proposed for each school in the future. And I understand that, that, you know, a school like Stafford High School is still very new, and so there aren't going to be a lot of projects there. And a school like North Stafford's very old, and there are going to be a lot of projects there. But it's just sometimes useful to, to get that kind of view when we look at this list as well. So not just by year of proposed work, but all the work that's being proposed at each school in, in just sort of a quick, a quick glance.
The only clarification I have with that was, what was spoke to earlier was, that would be difficult if, let's just say, the would be difficult if, let's just say, the replace the chiller is priority one, but the second for Rock Hill or whatever, whatever is not the same priority. Because I understood this was to be a priority list from top to bottom. If that's not the case, then, yeah, that's perfect. Because as we know, over the years, history is, we get, what, five million, four million, three million? And so the majority of the FY twenty-one stuff probably will not be done. And so, anyway, that's my point.
Thank you. Ms. Young, did you have anything?
I just have a comment on the last item on the list, just replacing the walk-in freezer and refrigerators at one of our elementary schools, and it's not the one that was addressed by Ms. Randall earlier this evening. I would ask you, Dr. Kizner, if you could check into the refrigerator that maybe grandfathered?
At Ferry Farm.
Just, not for an answer tonight, but if that's something we need to do. I noticed that the replacing the walk-in freezer and refrigerators at Wining Creek is going to be funded by nutrition. And while I very much appreciate nutrition funding these things in the kitchens, I do think that they're Stafford County Public Schools responsibility. So if there is not enough money in the nutrition budget to do these things, and they need to be replaced, then we need to look into funding for those. So if we could just, you know, get a response, you know, back on that, I'm not going to put it on here because it's probably not even enough money to, that couldn't be found somewhere if we really needed to do it. But I don't want to put too much of a burden of expectation on the nutrition folks to have to fund these things. I mean, traditionally, they've funded hoods and all kinds of things. It amazes me that they can even come up with that funding to do it. So if we could just look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
And if I can, real quick, I just want to clarify that on the very first year, at the very bottom, and this might be kind of what you're referring to, I was just looking at this with John, and we've reorganized some stuff, the funding source for those last two items are actually swapped. So the Wining Creek Elementary School walk-in freezer is actually the nutrition capital funding, and the one above that for that is the repair main road entrances.
You don't want to tell me, Mr. Fulmer, that what I'm looking at is not accurate.
I am telling you, because I want to tell you that before you approve it, and that is something literally, yeah.
That's the only change?
That is the only change, yes, ma'am. I looked through, the rest of them are fine, that was when they were changing the priority order when they met earlier.
So you said something was swapped, is nutrition funding something else?
It's just that funding source. So nutrition funding always covers our walk-in freezers.
Right, but this says and refrigerators.
Yes, ma'am, the freezers and refrigerators.
So the nutrition covers it, but if nutrition can't afford it, then we need to do it as a school's.
Correct, we would.
Speaking for myself, I think that's important.
Yeah, a few years ago, it used to be that nutrition contributed about $200,000 a year to our operating fund to help cover the overhead expenses that the, you know, as far as management and stuff, that the operating fund covers for nutrition. And we eliminated that and then asked nutrition to pick up some of their capital funding in place of that $200,000 operating.
Okay, and as long as I'm off this subject and we're talking about kitchens, when are we going to get a report on the financing, the air conditioning?
I can check on, I don't know, John, if, I can ask John if he's got an update on the report.
We can just get back to us on that, because I do not, I mean, yes, it's cooling off and we're not thinking of air conditioning, but we need to, we need to get that report.
Talking about the kitchen AC, correct, the final report?
Yes, all the kitchens that are not currently air conditioned.
Yes, ma'am.
All nine of them?
By this Friday, I'll get you an update.
Thank you. All right, well, sorry to digress, but if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve three R infrastructure list, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to ten point oh-two. Direct the superintendent to send a letter to county administrator regarding FY nineteen year-end carryover funds.
Move to approve item ten point oh-two, the letter sent to the county administrator regarding FY nineteen year-end carryover funds.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Healy, I do.
Yes, Ms. Hazard.
With regard to the VOIP telephone system, and I know it's interrelated to the three R list, when can that project be done? And I know it says it's a two million dollar figure. Is it going, is it a project to be all done at the same time over next summer, or is this a phased kind of project? What is it?
It's a phase. So we've actually looked at a number of different scenarios. Right now, it could be done in one year, but wouldn't necessarily be done in the span of one summer. So we would obviously be having to delicately schedule around, you know, or minimize the disruption at schools while school was actively underway. There's also a plan that extends it out over three years, but that would actually drive up the total cost of the project if we had to run multiple systems for that long. So we've got a number of scenarios. The two million dollars that I've worked with, Mr. Fulmer on this extensively over the last ten months, is actually, allows us to implement the whole project within a one-year span.
Okay. My thinking on this is, I'm not trying to override this, however, if this is a project, for me, I would be very uncomfortable with a phone system being worked on during a school year when we have students inside a building. We all remember the first day of school in half the systems. I have heard tonight, and I completely agree with Dr. Kizner, that we need to outsource a study on our transportation system. I believe this is a project that we need now, and we need to start implementing. I think we would get buy-in, and we may, and we probably do in general. If this project can be divided, or if it's better to be divided, and like I said, I don't know, I would prefer to have some kind of caveat here about further analysis of that two million dollars, because it's also on our three R list of saying, to me, the most important thing we can use money that we haven't budgeted for is to get this study started and outsourced at the beginning of the year. Maybe the Board of Supervisors would let us do the RFP now, knowing they won't release the funds. So I am just throwing that out to our board as an idea, because I think it's critical, because we don't have that kind of money sitting, well, I mean, we would be diverting it from something else. I am not trying to divert it from a telephone system, but if it's not one we can implement, how can we say we want carryforward funds to implement half the project? That's just where my thinking is. I just want, you know, I feel like I need to throw that out, because this is our shot to ask the Board of Supervisors for money, and they are hearing, or at least my supervisor is, about buses and the challenges. I think I have somebody ready, you know, I think they would be open to it, but Dr. Kizner, I, you know, defer, but I completely agree with you on the outsourcing, but I'm not sure how, I can't imagine that's a cheap contract, and I don't want to go cheap. I want the best, and I want it done right, and if that means we need to say, we want to have the RFP on the streets, so the moment they approve this money in January, it can be on the streets, I'm willing to ask for that money now.
Madam Chair, so, no, that's, I think, you know, and I know we're going to get to talking a little bit about the, but I think we need to know the problem, and we've heard some of the problems. Define the problem a little bit better before we jump to a outsourcing where you hire two, two folks or come on the bus and they come back to us and they go, hey, you know, they're treating the bus drivers not nice, and they're cursing at them and they're, and you're not paying them enough. And, well, okay, yeah, we kind of know that. What else do you got for me? So I don't know. I, you know, I, I'm just concerned about, and if Dr. Kizner has the opportunity to kind of talk about this discipline problem on the bus, we have cameras on the buses, we have, you know, a couple of kids get kicked out of school for, you know, that's going to tighten, hopefully that might tighten the ship up real quick. I don't know. So that's just my concern, is to jump right into a contract of which the problem is ill-defined.
I may have misspoken. I meant outsource a consultant to study, because I have heard from bus drivers that it is not just the students, it is maintenance, it is buses not working. That's a huge overview overhaul of transportation. I misspoke when I said outsource, I didn't mean outsource of the position I meant.
No, I mean.
I think we need to go outside to.
I understood what you said.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I understood to outsource a contractor to come in to say, hey, these are the things that, yeah.
But, just something for us to think about. I think, I just.
Okay, Ms. Young?
Yeah, I was just going to ask about the timing. I was thinking the same thing, like my colleague Holly here, in reference to time to work on the telephone system, because I was thinking about males being in the school system. Do they work evenings, and would that have been, would that reduce the time? Instead of a year, wouldn't it, wouldn't it shrink if they were working like different hours, like they do on the roads at night?
So a lot of the implementation of the phone system, it's a combination of updating wiring in some locations, which could certainly be done off hours, that's what we did here in this building over the summer, to minimize the disruption. But a great deal of the project is actually in more of the IT work, in the configuration of the VoIP system, the voice-over IP system. It's certainly possible, but to Ms. Hazard's concern, we wouldn't be able to do necessarily an entire school in one night. So we would have a situation where a school might spend days or weeks in a transitionary period, and I agree, that would be a higher risk situation than we would.
I will tell you, the principals would probably tell you, they will be willing to be inconvenienced to get the phones at a level where, that they just don't break down, it's a safety issue, it's a communication issue. I had an interesting thing today, I saw, we can't, if somebody, if a parent calls us today about a question, we can't even transfer you from central office to a school. Where to tell a parent in 2019, oh, we could give you the number? No, everywhere I've worked, you just transfer the phone call. We want to be an A-plus school system, right? But some of our functions and operations or procedures are not an A-plus, and it wouldn't even give us a C, okay? And I'm pretty liberal, greater, okay? So we have to do this. I think I trust Peter and his team to work with the contractor and the principals to minimize disruption, you know, that, it's hard to fix a plane while it's flying, right? We all say that. We have a short window, we can't do everything over the window, we can't do it during Christmas break. We could do some of it, we're going to have to have some inconvenience in order to get the long-term benefit.
So I would just, Madam Chair, one more, if you don't mind.
Of course not, Mr. McCosker.
Yeah.
And you're not even limiting it to Ferry Farms.
I've only got a few more of these anyway. A few more of these and then I go away, which makes a lot of people happy. So listen, the, my concern with the carryover money was, is the actual execution window of making sure that we get the, if not, you know, we missed the fall borrow, the spring or the spring bid, so that we can actually get something done in the summertime. And so I just don't want to punt this until February and start, and we're still kind of messing around with what are we going to do with our FY twenty, FY nineteen carryover. Yeah.
I just want to follow up on that thought, if you don't mind, Dr. Chase. We call it carryover, but we know we really don't have that money.
Right.
Once that fiscal year ends, unless the funds are, you know, appropriated, or not, there's some word, what is it, there's.
Re-appropriated from the supervisors.
Well, there's certain things, if we have a contract, we can consider that, you know, the funds can be re-appropriated, but these are funds that are not appropriated in any means. So really, we are at the mercy of the supervisors to grant us the right to spend these funds, because the monies go back into the county coffers and the supervisors have the choice of using them for other projects, as we know, we've seen in the past. So I'm thinking, just looking at this, where we say, we're requesting that the superintendent notify Mr. Foley of our intention to use the projected carryover funds. Perhaps we should say our desire or our intention, you know, if approved, or our intention to request that they be re-appropriated for these projects, because we need to recognize that this is not our choice. I mean, we have to be part of a team here, and, you know, we're going to be asking the supervisors to allow us to use this money, you know, for these purposes. So that's just something we want to think about, and this is, actually, we're not requesting the superintendent to notify Mr. Foley, we are asking him to share with the board of supervisors, you know, our intention, if approved, or our desire, you know, to spend it on these projects that we consider critical to the school system. So that's just something, but it follows up with the comments that you just made.
No, I totally appreciate that, and, you know, and that's the intent, is to, if we have the three things, kind of stick with the three things, unless an emergency comes up, and we keep briefing this over and over, so this is a very, this is, the Board of Supervisors are well-informed of the three projects that we've identified ten months earlier, eight months earlier, and that's the intent.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of add on with the point that Ms. Hazard brought, and it's simply, it's my understanding that we have the phone systems just randomly not working, and so I would imagine that parents would appreciate if we let them know, we're going to be working on the phone system at this school for these, this two-week period. That's better than just the random fourteen days over the course of the year that they don't even know that the phone system is not working. So, just a different perspective on it, that it may be that it'd be okay if, you know, we let people know what's going on and what the alternative is during the time that that work is being done.
Any other comments, Ms. Hazard?
I just have a comment. When the phones are down, those wristwatches come out and those cellphones out of the bag. So we're worried about those that don't have any, right?
Ms. Healy, would, with the letter, would you all accept something in the letter to the extent, trying to cover my point of as we get more information about this two million system, two million dollar system, we're going to have to defend when it goes, saying that is our intent, because I really do believe if we do have some emergency between now, remember, we're talking, we won't get these monies till January or February. I know what's near and dear to my heart, I've told you all what it is, but let's say we really look at this implementation schedule and it doesn't work and we can't defend it, I think we just need some, and I hate using this word, vague language that we may substitute should an emergency project, or something to that extent that covers us, because three months from now, there may be something else that rises to the top.
Right, but if we say it's our desire to use it, certainly we would reserve that right to change that if an emergency came in.
That's what I would like in there, if there could be subject to some kind of.
Well, it's not even our money to begin with, as I just noted, so I think we do have to recognize that this is, this is really within the purview of the supervisors to reappropriate this to us. I think there's been some misconception generally that carryover funds are automatically, you know, within the school board's spending authority, and those of us who've been around a while realize that is not the case, and.
And I would remind you, we're trying to.
It's our job to advocate to get it back.
I agree with you, and we're trying to get a phone service that the county, phone system the county has, okay? So we're, you know, we talk about parity, I think the Board of Supervisors will understand this. I would just offer you, we opened up two schools, and logistically, we'll make this work. This is just a need, it's not very sexy in a sense, like put two million dollars for a new phone system, but the reality is, we have a phone system that's antiquated, okay? So one thing the school board said a couple of weeks ago, we want to get this to the counties quickly, so as they're discussing how they're going to spend funds, they would know that the school board is, has a request.
So what do we want to do? Leave it like it is, or make a little tweak?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the tweak about Ms. Healy's point, you know, that it's our wish or desire, since it is not currently our money.
Right, just recognizing that, but I think we really do need to emphasize that the school board has identified these as critical areas that need to be addressed, and that it is our, you know, our hope, our desire that we can use the funding that we saved from the past year for these projects, because we do not have these, you know, the money in the operating budget to address these.
So what's the word, how are we changing it?
So would we just approve it and then, knowing that the tweaks are going to go in, I mean, instead of having to wait again?
Yeah, it doesn't need to come back.
Okay.
No, I think.
Okay.
If you'd like me to look at it, I can look at it.
Are we approving it or wait?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're approving the concept.
The concept, so you're going to work on it and maybe email?
No, I'm not going to work on it. You're, you can work on it. I will look at it for you if you like. But I do have a day job. I know it doesn't seem like it, but... That's right.
Listen, you got the minutes, right? I could capture what people said.
That's right.
You say you will?
I don't think she's responding. Well, thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the, Dr. Kizner sending a somewhat edited version of this letter over, expressing our, our desire. You say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Oh, my gosh, we're moving right along here. Okay, we're still on the action items. Hmm. Okay, waiver to the extent required of attorney-client privilege. All right, does this one sound familiar? Ms. Hazard and I have brought this back to the board. Ms. Hazard, would you like to start this discussion, or do you have a motion?
I'll make, I'll start it off with a motion, so we can start discussion. I move to waive to the extent required attorney-client privilege to permit the release to the public of the following, the May 8, 2019 email and email response, the July 12 memorandum from counsel, the August 5, 2019 letter from counsel to the school board chairperson and members of the school board. Because I believe those would be covered by privilege.
But there was a fourth item on there.
And then, the list of board member questions submitted to counsel via the school board chair and vice chair on July 26, 2019.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion.
I can, I guess, get us started. This is an extraordinary thing to, to do. The board has done it in the past with regard to a financial audit that was done on behalf of the board. At that time, I felt it was in the public's best interest, there was not a lawsuit, but I felt it was in the public's best interest to know what happened during that time period regarding our finances. I believe it made us a better division by having that open and candid and painful discussion. I believe that releasing this opinion and these opinions will also help and bring further clarity to our constituents and to our community as a whole. I hope it will unite rather than divide, so that we know what things we want to learn and how we can put forth the best implementation plan possible. I also want to speak to those who took the survey that was done by the SEA, to the, let me make sure I have it right, because I want to make sure I'm right, to the 530 of you who responded and the 70 of you who made comments. I've read every one of those comments that were given. There are a lot of questions that are raised in there that I believe may be answered or at least addressed in the responses to these legal opinions. I saw some of the things about things being unclear, appropriate places. There were 70 comments, I've highlighted them all, and I think some of them, it will provide clarity to you, the 70 of you who commented and the 530 who took the survey, some of the comfort I hope this would bring to you all. And I hope it would unite the, the community to make sure we get whatever implementation plans, policies, or follow-on actions, that we do it the best way possible from the most amount of knowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Any other discussion?
The only thing I'm gonna say, say about it, I mean, I made my position pretty clear on it. It's not gonna change the vote, it's, nothing's gonna change. It's just going to, a lot of people said we had concerns that were, you know, that they were inconsequential. Well, this might bring that to light. Or the folks that said, you guys are being ridiculous about this, they might be right. They might be, you know, see, I told you guys, you guys on the school board, we were right. So, I, I think it would help both sides a little bit to understand where everyone's concerns were coming from. It's not gonna, again, it's not gonna change anything, it's not gonna change the trajectory of the plan or the, or the policy or anything else like that. So, I don't think there's anything wrong with just putting it out there. It'll, it'll calm everybody's questions. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it.
Dr. Chase.
So, I, I, you know, I think a client, attorney-client privilege is there for a reason. I think that to put something like that up on a webpage is kind of a strange thing to do, and perhaps not the most responsible thing to do. And, you know, it, it's a weird position where we can't really talk about why we might vote one way or the other about this. And it's, it's the hard part of being an elected official, is that sometimes you have to make a decision and then people tell you that you're not being transparent. Sometimes, we shouldn't be too transparent, as in the case four years ago, when we came out of that meeting and decided to be very transparent about a nine-year-old. And so, I just, I just think, a little caution, I asked for information about when we have given, waived client, attorney-client privilege in the past, and as far as I know, there's only one case. And I wasn't on the board at the time, so I don't really know what went on in that decision. But for me, there are reasons that, that I will, I, I don't think it's prudent for the school system for us to waive our attorney-client privilege at this time.
Sure, yeah, I'll talk, you know, and, and this, this keeps coming back up, and rightfully so. And I appreciate, I appreciate you all bringing it back up. And one, you know, we love Disney. And one thing, I'm, I have that, you know, that lady singing, "Let it go, let it go." And that, that's on one side. On the other side, it's a serious matter. And, and, you know, I remember the, the case and the precedent. I had, I didn't reread the actual release, but, you know, that was a time when it was, you know, there was some very serious financial things going on in this division, to the tune of alleged misappropriation of funds, millions of dollars being spent and other things that the board had absolutely no idea about. And, you know, I think an alleged mis, misdirection by some of the current staff members who no longer here anymore, of the board members. And you and I were sitting on that board during, during that time. And it was a terrible, terrible time where we hired an independent auditor, if you remember, for that issue as well. And, and the auditor...
We also actually hired an attorney.
Yeah, and an attorney.
Who hired an auditor.
And the auditor, and came back and said a lot of things that were crazy, you know, the, the records were eaten by roaches and all, all of the stuff, so, so the school, the school couldn't, but I'm not gonna stay here and, and defend that precedent that we had during that horrible time in the county, when we lost all that money for years and years, it was alleged by the auditor. So, but this isn't, this isn't the time when I'm going to, when I'm going to release this, waive my attorney-client privilege.
Ms. Young.
You want me to speak?
If you wish.
Sure, why not? Take the opportunity, I just Googled waiver. Generally occurs when the holder of the privilege, be it the party or authorized counsel or agent, voluntarily discloses the privileged communication to a third party. Once privilege is waived as to a communication, the privilege can be waived as to all communications on the same subject matter. I will not give... You know, it's like the right to vote. It's like just the right, period. And for me, I, I take rights seriously. You don't want me to go down that road.
Okay, well, I just have a question, and I haven't looked at the minutes from the last meeting, and I apologize. Okay, well, when, when they are, I, my recollection was that you had made the motion to waive the privilege. Now, I'm not saying it was required to waive it with respect to Dr. Kizner, because I'm not here as an attorney, but that was the motion, as I recall, and if, if not, then I apologize. But I thought that was the, the motion at the last meeting.
As our agent.
Okay, all right, just, just wanted to clarify that. But y'all know where I am on this, and I would like to, to reiterate Ms. Egan's comments. This is not gonna change the vote. The vote has been taken, the decision of a majority of the board has ruled. But I do think that there is a very strong interest of the public in knowing the information that was provided to this board. And, and I would compare it to the situation with the audit. At, at that audit, I know, I had people in my community that wanted to know what's going on, you know, what happened? What happened to this money? You know, how did you get to where you were? And the board at that time chose to waive the privilege. And it is an extraordinary case, but it is the only other case in my time on the board that it has even come to the board for a discussion or consideration. So, this is not something that is gonna typically occur with the board. Again, it's gonna be the majority vote of the board will rule here. But, you know, I want, you know, my position very clear, that I think the public has a right to see it. I don't think there is any potential damage to this board. We're not involved in litigation, it is not any strategy that's been given to us if we were involved in litigation. This is advice, it's analysis, it's an opinion that was provided to us. And I don't remember any other issue, other than the audit, that came to this level of interest and concern by the Stafford community. And that's why I'm gonna support releasing this. And Dr. Chase, many times I agree with you, but I have to say, I don't agree by saying this is not the most responsible thing to do, because I think it is the responsible thing to do. This community was, you know, we went through a lot to get where we are. I'm, I'm beyond that battle at this point, we are, we've got the policy, we're gonna have an implementation plan. You heard my comments earlier, asking a request, we'll see what happens with that as to the input on the implementation plan. But one thing we can do is to move forward and to provide that, share that information. And, and I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to people. I mean, I'm hearing, it's, it's out there on some of these social medias. Y'all know I don't do social media, so I haven't, I haven't seen it, but I've, I've heard it's out there and people are, are intimating that they've seen this. So, I don't know, you know, who gave it to them or if they've actually seen it, but there's certainly some very strong indication. So, I, I just think it, it would be the responsible thing to do. And, and y'all remember that meeting we had in July, which was the worst meeting I've ever been to on this school board, because our public that was here to support the policy was irate. They were angry, because we said, we're gonna wait to issue this opinion, we're not gonna, we, we want an opinion, we have questions, we're gonna ask a lawyer, we're gonna get the answers, and then we'll take a vote. So, it's very clear that at least a, a majority of the board at that time wanted to get the answers to those questions. And, and I, and I just, I see nothing wrong with sharing it, and I think it is the responsible thing to do. And if I've heard transparency once, I've heard it hundreds of times on this board. I'm not one that uses that word, because to me, that's just the way we should be anyway. But I have heard it over and over again, not just from this board, but from other board members in the past. And to me, that's transparency, where you share this information, so...
Madam Chair, may I ask a question real quick? Can, can we look into some assertions that have been made on two separate occasions about this board approximately five years ago, about us coming out of a meeting and divulging the name of, of a student, the student in question? This board, as far as I know, did no such thing. So, I'd like to put an end to this, and soon.
I, I was, I thought I was very clear that I did not say that we divulged the name. I said we divulged the school, we divulged the fact that the student was transgender, and we divulged what we were planning to do, as opposed to what we normally do, which is say, in the case of student A, we uphold the recommendation of the superintendent.
Okay, well, I would like to get this clarified once and for all, so if we can instruct somebody to get verbatim.
Well, that, that may involve a waiver of attorney privilege, Ms. Egan, so maybe we'll bring that one back to the board. We'll, we can, we can go further on that, but, you know, Dr. Chase, I mean, you've been here two years and you've, you've seen, well, almost two years, but close to two years. And, and you've, you've certainly seen things that come in. And those student A and B and C and employee A and B, that's with respect to discipline that is before the board, that we are reporting out the actions the board has taken. The other was a completely different situation. And we'll, we'll be happy to go and get some more information for you, and we may be asking to waive privilege on that one, when it, when it comes back. But thank you, Ms. Egan. Well, well, if you have a second, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which I don't think you'll have a problem getting one. All right, any other discussion? All in favor to waive the attorney-client privilege, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Hazard? Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Hollerback?
Yes.
Ms. McCosker?
No.
And Ms. Young?
No.
Your motion fails as a tie?
Okay, so that means it comes back at the next meeting, correct, when we have a full board? Okay. And we'll also look into that other item that, that you asked for as well. All right, so that'll be coming back at the next meeting. Moving right along, approval of the school board legislative priorities for the 2019 school year. All right, I, I, let's see, who, who got that second in first? All right, we'll give to Ms. Young, she's closer, closer to my ear here. All right, so a motion and a second, any discussion?
Ms. Healy, let me just give two over. First, we, we talk about the cost to compete. It has been talked about time and time again, that we would really like to get that going at the state level. The elimination of the 2009 support staff cap, Stafford County has lost $9.2 million over the last, since 2009, while we've had an 11% increase in students. We have some things certainly about making sure that Virginia becomes a nationwide leader in teacher and school personnel salaries. Please understand, this is school personnel salaries. We also are talking a little bit about licensure, and we did have, it's one of our local priorities about our pure pupil expenditure, which I hope you all will continue to hear more about. And many of you know, I have still, I'm still keeping this on there, is that penalty for drivers who illegally pass the school buses. I know that our current Commonwealth attorney does not believe that that is legal, however, I would, we do have some support from the Board of Supervisors, and I know Spotsylvania just did it. So, I'd like to bring that back. Other than that, I appreciate everybody's work on this, and I think we have a really strong going forward.
All right, any comment, Ms. Egan?
Just, thank you, Holly, for spearheading this, there was a lot of work. Thank you.
Yes, in a short amount of time.
Yep.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Can I just say one thing? You get weekly or monthly from V S B A updates on legal issues, please read the last one. It's critical. The state board is, is, in October, will be making some significant changes to the standards of quality. That will drive a lot of our budget and staffing decisions, and I just think you need to be fully aware. Okay, thank you.
All right, that brings us to information items. 11.01, approval of an adjustment to bus driver hourly pay rates to address driver shortage. Well, we, we wanted to, well, we put, we moved it from action to information. I don't know if you want to give the report now, Dr. Kizner, or later, it's fine.
I think you heard a lot, so today, from 11 to 12:30, I'm sorry.
From 11 to 12:30, we met with many bus drivers at the Transportation Department to hear their concerns, and, and you heard many of them tonight. I think Ms. Hollerback's question is, is a good question, because we're still gonna have the issues that we have come tomorrow morning. But I think what we're trying to do is try to fix something now, and at the same time, come up with something that's more long-term and effective. I already made my comments earlier, I think our salary schedule is causing great frustration, and I would like to make, I will, and you can reject it, but I'm gonna work with my team to offer you another way of looking at it. And I really believe, as, and I thank Holly for being supportive, of getting someone to really examine our entire transportation operations, A to Z, so we could not come to a solution that may not be addressing the real problems. And so, I do want to thank the board, uh, board members. I want to thank Transportation, we are putting a team together, we'll start next week. My goal, my objective is to meet with them on a regular basis. My goal, my objective is to meet with them on a regular basis and in one of the November board meetings, make a, another recommendation to the school board based on the feedback input. And then as a school board chair stated, make it retroactive October 1st, whatever is decided.
I, I would ask to Dr. Kizner, I know it may be ambitious, but if there's any way you could try to get it back to the board for the second meeting in October, that way we could consider it. And then if we could approve it in November, we could have those checks for December.
It'd be nice.
Right, Mr. Fulmer?
Madam Chair, just a second.
Depending on when.
So.
It would be nice. It would be nice.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I said may. I didn't say shall.
Yeah, thank you. That's all.
I agree. So my comments earlier were, it's okay to, I think it's okay to have a consultant come in and that's, I think that's what we're talking about. I understand that. However, if there's discipline issues on the bus, my point is I don't need a consultant to, you know, give me a, what was the Evergreen study? A 300-page dissertation about we, how we're not fixing discipline issues on the bus or looking into the discipline issues on the bus or maybe not supporting the bus driver when they come in with a sworn statement to the principal and say, hey, I got four kids on this bus that, that just aren't doing this. And then they go, sorry, that's your job. And that, that's happened, not here, but it's happened in my 55 years across, across different.
Unfortunately, I think it is happening here.
Okay, I'm just saying. So I, I can't prove anything, but I, I just wanted you to, and I know you will, to look into it, Dr. Kizner.
So soon, soon as I came back from their meeting, I met with the three elementary, middle and high school chiefs, addressed quickly the one comment, which I think is a, I'm not going to say low-hanging fruit, but needs to be in place right away. When a bus driver makes a discipline referral and a principal makes a decision, that principal is talking to the bus driver to help understand that decision. That lack of communication causes great frustration. I also believe that we heard, and this is, I think we all take, we all could be part of the solution on this. They also shared a lot of frustration about parents and I know how many emails we get from parents complaining. And I'm not here to point fingers and placing blame because we transport, I don't know, Barry once told us, 15, 16,000, maybe 17,000 kids a day. I'm going to say they may disagree and this is what I would like to believe because I really think it's true. Most of our kids are actually acting correctly on the school buses. I don't want to broad, you know, to say every kid on the bus is, is, is acting like an animal. I hate to use that term, but I can't think of something else, I'm tired. So, but when we have a kid that did what we heard, I'm not going to repeat those words, that kid to me should be off the bus for a very long time and a bus ride is a requirement until you lose a privilege. Okay? So you lose a privilege when you act that disgusting. And the parent has to come in and understand it. And I say this because I believe it. If we have to make it uncomfortable for parents, and I shared this at this meeting and I'll just end it on this, an elementary principal, an elementary principal, Mr. Hicks, when I read last week that he had to ride the bus and choir harbor because kids are misbehaving, I cannot believe that parents of six-year-olds to 10, 11-year-olds are not having a conversation with their kids of their expectation of riding a bus. Why is our principal leaving the building to ride a bus to tell children of parents how to behave? So I wouldn't mind having a community forum and discussion about a compact and responsibility. If we want to do it, we have to do it big and we have to do it system, not pointing fingers, but if, but, you know, I, I could just talk about this too, too long, but I would just say, we have so many issues and I'm, and getting kids to point A to B for a lot of our routes are a challenge. And I want to make sure it's not to some logistic concern that the, the buses are going the wrong way, we have buses going where they shouldn't be going. And I don't know this, I, I would ask, I know driving around Stafford, even my short 13 months here has become more and more challenging. And I just wonder a little bit, not a little bit, I actually wonder this a lot, if we overpromised, if we overpromised. How many of you come from DC area and have a difficult time, understandably so, get here when the meeting starts? Okay? And so I think we set ourselves, we set the bus drivers and Transportation with an unrealistic expectation that we were going to get you here to there. That was a good, that was an aspiration that I'm glad we did, but now we have to own it, that that is very, very difficult, if not unrealistic. Again, I don't have the solutions, but I'm just saying that is one of the frustrations parents are hearing, are feeling like. You said it's going to be here at 45 minutes and now it's taking an hour and 20 minutes. Well, you know, maybe the hour and 20 minutes was always the right answer.
Madam Chair? I, I didn't say anything during the member comment because I was saving it for this, so I would just like to, to get this out. First of all, I want to thank everybody for not just taking this off the agenda. I think it was very important for us to have this conversation tonight for a lot of reasons. I'll use that word, that transparency, that we are having these conversations because just the optics, just to pull it off the agenda and not say anything about it, parents' heads would have exploded. My head was exploding when I found out that it was being pulled with no discussion. I wasn't there for the conversation yesterday, so I, I wasn't privileged to all of the discussions that were had. So I'm glad this is being put out there now so that everyone can hear that yes, we are doing something about it, but it still doesn't take away the, the fact that we still have a problem and we still need to think outside of the box on how we can fit it. That's a, that's a long-term solution and I'm so glad that everybody's working together. I would love to be a part of that conversation. I have, every year, we put bus drivers and monitors on in the, in the budget for increased salaries and every year I voted for it. Unfortunately, but whatever happened to it, happened. The point is, is that we need to be doing something now to, to, even if it's a temporary fix. Somebody mentioned, and I thought about this this afternoon, we have these private bus companies that work for school divisions throughout the state. Why can't we do a short-term contract just to fill the void until we can get all of these things ironed out so that our bus drivers aren't having to do double runs, our teachers aren't having to stay there till, you know, 4:30, 5 o'clock at night? What are the options that we haven't considered that might be able just to fill this little void here until we can actually fix this?
And what would the school board and how would the public react if we set aside sports and after-school programs, which in the, which takes a lot of our buses off the late afternoons? I mean, I guess I'm really just trying to say is, everything needs to be looked at. That is, you know, that's an interesting option to explore. Again, I, I would like to get a grasp of, Barry once told us we have 230 buses, something like that on the, on, on the road. How many buses are we speaking about? Is it, is it tied to increased absences? We start most of the day with 20, 25 bus drivers short already in our current routing system. People have a right to be sick. People have a right to take personal days, so on. So we could add another, two, 10 days ago, the Friday before last, we had 45.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven drivers out. I, I was at schools and I know how hard they were driving.
How many permanent vacancies do we have?
I think 24 now.
28. So if we hire, if we short-term temps for those 28 positions, we wouldn't have half the problem we had now until we could actually fix our problem. That's all I'm saying. I just want to try to figure something out because this is not sustainable to keep doing this.
So you're not really saying the drivers, you're saying the, not, you're not saying the bu, we have the buses, you're saying to get the drivers.
Just to, yeah.
Contracted out is what you're saying.
Hire some of the private contractors that are out there that are serving some of the school divisions because that's the option that the school boards have chosen to do private transport.
Although, I, I'm not, again, I'm just.
Some of them aren't doing real well.
Roanoke County.
I'm just looking at qualified.
But you're, you're coming up with a potential solution, which I like.
Thank you.
And so that, just to finish up my thought, but that, and that's exactly what, there's some things you can do now and it sounds like you're already, because a lot of, you know, in my experience, a lot of people don't come to work if they're stressed out. If, if the bus ride is miserable, if the work environment is miserable, if you're getting harassed, you're sick.
Yep.
You're sick a lot. And whether it's a sub or a teacher, and, and so, you know, you, it looks like, it sounds like you're, you're, you're getting with the senior leaders and doing something about that right now to maybe help out the environment on some of these buses, let's say. But then, then there's some more things like, like maybe temp drivers, but, okay.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, in, in response to Dr. Kizner's comment about maybe we're overpromising. And, and the only thing that really concerns me the most, and I know it concerns probably everybody on this, on this board, is when I hear that a student doesn't get to school until 45 minutes late. And when I hear that, you know, in an elementary school where the teacher is trying to do this responsive classroom and then those students aren't there and they get there and, and all of this relationship building happened during that 45 minutes. So overpromising, I, I just would really like us to be able to get kids to school on time. I'm not, and don't get furious with me, I'm not so concerned if it takes a little longer to get home or if we have to pick you up earlier in order to make it on time, but I would really like us to be able to get kids to school on time if we can. And I, I know it's a challenge.
Ms. Hazard?
I do think we have to look outside the box. I think most people know, or at least I, I think, I do think maintenance and some things, some, based on some of the emails we've also gotten, I, I think we really have to look pretty deep in general because in my conversations with some of my, the bus drivers that serve the wonderful roads of Hartwood and Poplar and Mountain View, first, thank you. But you all have driven those for a long time and hearing your concerns this year were really hard to hear. And I'm just throwing out another sort of potential middle-of-the-road idea. I know right now in our schools, I know that bus driver contracts are different because they are based on a per-hour type thing. And I, I think we have to really, like, to me, unpacking that is going to be way out of my pay grade. But, because I think of, in, in our schools especially, I can talk to it of high school because I can speak to it because it happened to my daughter. We have teachers in our high schools teaching extra sections, especially of math, because of vacancies. Those teachers are given, depending on if they pick up one section on an X-Y day, it's a 10% increase to their pay. If they pick up two, I think it's a 20%. That recognizes that, yes, that teacher is still in that building, so they're in there on their contracted time, but it's saying you are taking on an additional responsibility. And I would really like to think of that concept, how or if that could work somehow with our drivers because I truly believe that even after we do all these things, in the next six weeks, we may not have 29 new drivers. That there are going to be teachers that are, I mean, excuse me, there are going to be drivers who are going to be picking up that route consistently because they aren't being picked up. I would love for there to be some kind of compensation because we are doing that for our teachers when they pick up extra sections. And yes, they're still in the building and to me, these drivers are still on a bus. They may be contracted for 6.5 hours and that should be X amount of miles, like I said, this is way out of mine, but now you're doing another 400 miles, I have no idea. But that takes a toll on that bus. That's a maintenance possible issue long-term. To me, it's a huge issue, but I don't know if that's a great concept or not, but I think of it.
No, I think it's.
Does that make any sense?
It makes a lot of sense to me. I, again, and, and I think the Chair and Vice Chair saw me a little confused about this contract language today. This contract that we have seems remarkably complex and maybe a barrier. I did ask our new HR director to be part of this discussion because I do think, again, we need to restructure how we're doing things because what we're doing now, we have to acknowledge, is not getting us the result that we're seeking. I also say this because I want to be honest. Talking to a lot of superintendents, our challenge is much greater than you think because they are also facing driver shortages. Okay? So we do have to feel, find a way to be competitive, but also, as we heard, with these drivers will be the ambassadors to tell, you know what? You come to Stafford County Public Schools, it's a good place to work because besides pay and, and what else, these are the other things that they're doing for us. Okay? And so something like that, I think, could be unique compared to other school divisions. So everything has to be left at table and I'm going to be first to tell you, six weeks, we're going to have a recommendation. We're not going to have all the solutions. Where we, how we got here today does not just happen starting August 12th. Okay? So we, we, we will make great progress by collaborating. We are going to have a recommendation, but we're not, the work is not going to stop the day that we do the recommendation.
All right, so it sounds like we're going to have a long-term recommendation, but as Ms. Egan has made clear, and I think the other board members agree, Dr. Kizner, we also need a short-term, uh, plan. And that, that plan would be, how are we going to address the, the shortage? Whether it's, you know, an approach as Ms. Hazard suggests that maybe we can, you know, add in, pay incentives, you know, for taking these additional on, or Dr. Chase, maybe we start school earlier so we can get the buses on the road earlier, so we can, you know, get people closer to the start time, before the start time rather than after. Or as Ms. Egan says, look into, you know, contract labor. There's all, you know, these are, these are just some suggestions and we are by far not the experts on this. So, you know, what I'd like to see is, you know, a short-term and, and long-term. And, and again, if there's any way to bring something in October, maybe the short-term, that would, that would be helpful because that's going to relieve some of the pressure on, on our drivers if we can help address this, the short-term issue, which is having enough drivers to transport the students. So long-term is, you know, how are we going to fairly compensate our drivers as well as make sure that they do not have in, I don't know what the word is. They have a respectful working environment. I mean, I have to say, I was shocked, shocked that these things are going on in the bus, not only that they're going on, but there's a record of them. There are videos of what's going on and nothing's happened. So that's just to me because I've sat on discipline committees where we have said, okay, you're, you're off the bus for whatever amount of time because of quite inappropriate behavior. So I think we need to make clear, and, and it sounds like you've already started that with your staff, but with our, with our, our line, line people, you know, what the expectations are, you know, from, from the school system, what the standards are, and, and then start, you know, enforcing it. Because this, this is going to be a partnership. This, this is, this is the, the school staff, it's the parents, you know, and, and the students. And if, if some students are put off the bus because they're not behaving, you know, properly, and I'm not talking about just maybe spilling water, although they shouldn't do that, but, but some, like this language.
Yeah, no, you don't have to repeat it.
You know, that, that, that's just not acceptable. And, and our bus drivers also need to know what is the appropriate protocol for them when this happens. Do they go back to school? Do they, you know, call a deputy? I mean, I think it needs to be, everybody needs to be reading from the same page on here. You know, what, what are the expectations and, you know, what are they to do at that point? Because particularly with some newer people that, that may not be as experienced, you know, there, there may be some confusion. So I, I mean, I, I appreciate you, you know, having that meeting today and I appreciate the, the ability to come is with Dr. Chase and we didn't mean to leave anybody out, but we wanted to have a presence from the school board so that, that the drivers know that, that, you know, we are, we have, we are concerned. So this, this is, this is like firsthand and we both took notes.
We did.
So we can, if, if we can read mine, you know, we, we, we will be sharing them, but I, I think we could not have said it as eloquently as the, the drivers who addressed us tonight. So you have, you have a, a mission impossible that we will expect to be reached. So thank, thank you.
I might kind of misread this with the.
Okay. Oh, yeah, well, this, this has been a lovely year, just a lovely year to be your Chair, people.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask the right questions during my interview.
Oh, you're, listen, you've been here a year now, no excuses. You're, you're not, you're not a newbie. You've, you've had your anniversary. All right, so is that enough discussion for tonight on the, the buses? All right, Mrs. Massey, come on down. Poor Mrs. Massey, she always seems to get at the end, although we tried to put you at the top of the, the information. But unfortunately, there's, or maybe fortunately, Mrs. Massey has several things that came up recently that she needs us to approve tonight. They're on for information, but we're, there's, there's a request that they be brought to action and the reason for that is so that we can actually apply. the reason for that is so that we can actually apply for grants and get money to do things. So, the first item is the authorization for the school board chair to sign a grant application for the Head Start Nutrition Consultant Project. Do we have a, where is this one I'm reading? Is this a new one, is this a new one you put on, Missy?
That's the first one.
Eleven oh two.
Oh, okay, well, I'm, geez, not only did I get Mr. Fulmer's revisions, I didn't get these. I'm the paper person. Well, you know what, we'll get to that one next. The first one is authorization of, where are we? Oh, the school board chairperson, that would be me, to sign a grant application for the Children's Insurance Outreach Project. Any questions on this? If not, do we have a motion to move it to action?
Motion to move, sorry, motion to move 11.02 to action. Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Dr. Chase. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, now, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve authorization for the school board chair to sign a grant application for the Children's Insurance Outreach Project.
All right, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Hold on there, you're not done yet. The next one, 11.03, authorization for the school board chairperson to sign a grant application for the Head Start Nutrition Consultant Project.
Motion to move 11.03 to action.
Second.
All right, this is the Hazard and Egan show here. You guys are fast, fast, move it along. All right, all in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, do we have another motion?
Motion to authorize the school board chair to sign a grant application for the Head Start Nutrition Consultant Project.
All right. Ditto, Ms. Hall. Any discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks for standing.
unanimous, one more, 11.04.
That's somebody else though, isn't it?
I think that's Dr. Towery.
Oh, but Mrs. Massey is doing so well. Would you like to appoint her your designee?
Dr. Towery, there's 18 pages, and I intend to go over every single one.
Okay, well, you're going to have to have a private audience, Mr. McOscar. This one is for tonight too, right? Is this one, the one that, yes?
That would be wonderful.
Yes, this is the one that was inadvertently omitted. I think that was my words, but that's okay. There's no harm here. It was supposed to have been on the agenda. This is to authorize the school board chairperson to sign an advancing computer science and education grant application. So, these don't cause us anything, and they may bring us funding.
Motion.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to move 11.04 to action.
Second.
All right, oh, Mr. McOscar!
I got that one in.
Did you get that with Ms. Hall?
I'm just dying to talk about this.
Okay. All right, all in favor of moving it to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to authorize the school board chair to sign an advancing computer science and education grant application.
Second.
All right, here we are. Any discussion?
I just would like, if you would just take two seconds or a minute to tell us what it is for, so that people watching will know what this is about.
Absolutely. So, a few years ago, VDOE created some computer science SOL standards for us to be covering K through 12 in school divisions. There's, I think, a recognition from VDOE and the General Assembly, who's provided the funds for these competitive grants, that while they created these standards, not all school divisions have the capacity necessarily to do this on top of already busy things and stretch funds, et cetera. So, I think that grant is a way to encourage school divisions to set up regional partnerships, to develop curricular resources that will go into open source repositories and be available throughout the state.
Did you get that, Mr. McOscar?
Yeah, I'm done.
I think it went right over my head. It's almost 10 o'clock. Did that answer your questions, Dr. Chase? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next one doesn't have to be moved to action. It'll come back on the consent agenda at the next meeting if no one has any objections. Approval of the fifth year of a five-year policy services agreement between the Stafford County School Board and the Virginia School Boards Association for Policy Services in the amount of $3,750 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. No questions on that one, huh? All right, 11.06, approval of a contract with major security consulting and design for security audit services in the amount of $85,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. Dr. Chase?
So, there was one thing that's, I'm sure there's more than one thing, but one thing that I was curious about whether it could be added to the project, is I hear at schools that have larger numbers of students with severe health issues, and there's just one nurse there, that sometimes they're having to do pretty high-level interventions that then maybe puts less personnel available to handle other sort of safety issues. So, we're looking at safety here very much in terms of intruders or threats, those kinds of things, but health, safety, physical safety in terms of, you know, if a feeding tube has to be changed for a student, but then we've got another student who's had something happen. So, I just wondered if that is something that could also be looked at by the consulting company, or if that's just...
I don't think they have the scope, the experience level, it's more security and safety issues.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but to be honest, their credentials to this may, I mean...
That's correct.
Well, this contract's pretty much set, right? This has been through our contracting person?
Yes.
This contract is literally ready to be awarded once the school board approves it. So, the start date of this three-month term will start, you know, when it's approved. But that's something that certainly we could ask the superintendent to see if we have internal resources that can look into that, because we do have, you know, coordinators and, you know, people that could look into the school. So, Mr. Nichols, is there a benefit to the school system to this being approved this evening?
Ma'am, I would say that we've been working on this for quite some time to get it ready and presented. I would ask that, it's up to the will of the board. If you'd like to approve it, we could get it started as early as tomorrow with the kickoff. If you wish to wait until the October meeting.
I'm good. I'm fine.
If I could speak before we move it, most of you know how many times have I asked about this RFP, since poor Dr. Kizner has been sitting next to me, so I'm sure you're very happy that you finally bring it. So, I would like to move it. I do see, though, that it says the consulting firm will also be available to meet with the school board to present its findings and recommendations. I really would prefer for them not to be available. I would prefer for this board to have a meeting as part of their contract that they will meet with us. I thought I scanned the contract, I have to admit, very quickly.
The last thing to do.
I would like it to be that we, as a board, are going to meet with the consultant, because there may be questions. I believe it can still be closed, or I will let the attorneys figure it out, but I believe that the board needs to, based on other conversations we've had this evening, that we have a board, not just be available. I would like there to be a plan.
Yes, part of the contract is for them to sit down not only with the staff, but also the board, to present their findings and recommendations.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the board...
It's in the contract.
Okay. And I just have a quick question. We are going to involve the sheriff's office in this, correct?
They're going to be looking at the MOU with the sheriff's department, also the process of how we're using the SROs and the SPOs.
Okay, because, you know, we're so fortunate to have such a great relationship and a great sheriff, that we can, you know, help look out for the safety of the schools. I'd want to make sure we take advantage of that, you know, when we're moving forward, particularly, you know, since this could potentially have an impact on, you know, our decisions about where we're going to go with security. Thank you. So, do we have a motion to move this to action?
Motion to move to action, oh, sorry, I don't have the number, 11 point...
11.06.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Mr. McOscar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval of a contract with major security consulting design for security audit services in the amount of $85,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any further discussion? No? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, Mr. Nichols. That brings us to 11.07, discussion concerning...
11, yep.
Am I reading the right number?
Yeah, you are.
Discussion concerning postelementary redistricting, post-middle-school redistricting, and Embry Mill slash Park Ridge bus pilot program. All right, this is Ms. Young and Mr. McOscar.
Yeah, I'll be real quick.
Yeah, I'll be real quick on this. I did ask Dr. Kizner to give us some feedback on the redistricting, and basically I combined it because I was looking at my area schools. Of course, some individuals, I had a town meeting with some of my constituents' parents, you know, I drop in some of the schools sometimes, and they spoke about, you heard them, where they felt that they were moved, just like two streets were moved to Stafford Middle, while, you know, the little ones are going to Hampton Oaks, and they have older ones at North Stafford, so they want, you know, their family together, just like most of the other schools and areas, communities, saying they want to play baseball together. So, I think it's unjust for them to be just on their little own island. But what I was thinking about in general, and I think we had these conversations on and off, the reason why I lumped these three together is because Embry Mill and Park Ridge had that bus pilot program. I did ask Dr. Kizner to give me a feedback on that or a report, and he was going to work on that. But I think there's something wrong with the way how we just do redistricting, and yes, we did say to Barry and the school, you know, the bus, how is it going? Are you going to get them there? Yes, is it going to, you know, reduce the amount of time? And, you know, of course, Barry trying to please us all and say yes, but I don't know if we gave them enough time to do a study before. And I'm saying that, you know, we need to look at, you know, what can we do better? Next time we do a redistricting, that we make sure that we plan the bus at the same time, instead of having it like an afterthought. Say, for example, Embry Mill, we try to switch the time, you know, Embry Mill had late time, you know, and Winding Creek had early time, and so it's still, I don't know if it's a mess, but, you know, we talked about the two principals getting together and put some parents together, but that, I don't know what that feedback is, because I still get emails. I still get many emails stating that they're still having problems, and I forward those to Dr. Kizner. But, like, say, for example, you know, driving, the bus driver's driving all the way to Stafford Middle, and then they may be the same drivers that are going to HH Pool, I don't know, but to me, that is crazy. We have them doing some crazy stuff. And so I'm thinking that maybe it's the will of the board, if this, you know, maybe next year, we take these two streets, for example, you know, will make the parents happy, but maybe it would help, and it's just a little bit, but it would help those few bus drivers to go in one direction and not having to go down Route One, if they're taking the same neighborhood, they're taking them to HH Pool. Why have that bus driver stressed out going down Route One, wherever it is? This is just my thought, and this is the reason why I was bringing this up, but I didn't know that you all had that meeting, but I was just thinking, on a small scale, if we, if I was looking at this, I stood on the corner at Park Ridge many times and talked to bus drivers. I don't know who of you are here, but I talked to, oh, at Park Ridge? You seen me? Okay, so I've been there on that corner, talked and see what the problems are, talked to parents, figured, trying to figure something out. So, I try to want to be part of the solution. And so, this is the reason why I'm thinking, Dr. Kizner, you there with me? Hello?
I, yeah, no.
So, if you could talk to, if you could talk to...
You and I talked, so I follow you.
Yeah, so you have any feedback to that?
Yeah, just some things, real quickly. I handed out, so you understand September 30th is the official number, but I don't think a lot of things are going to change between now and September 30th. And I just want to share with you, to give you a sense of, you know, where we projected and how it actually occurred, and I know I gave you middle and high school also, but, you know, the question was about elementary and middle school, okay? What, just something just to think about, okay? I feel like this year, we handled the Rocky Run and Falmouth situation quickly and efficiently, and the board was supportive, so I do thank you. So, I guess, one of the questions that I would ask without seeking an answer, are there opportunities as superintendent, working with his staff, to look at these issues out there in islands, and say, you know what, we're just following a practice, because this is how we agreed months ago, but it needs to change? And as I just, and why do we, can I just change it because we know, we have the room, work with the families? Again, I'm not seeking an answer now, but there are, you heard a couple of parents come tonight, and, you know, I would need to study it more, but what I heard made sense to me. But, so, I guess I'm, you know, do we need to do a whole major redistricting? Or...
I don't think anybody uttered the R-word.
No.
Major, at least. Ms. Egan wants to talk next, okay?
So, I just raised that because, you know, we may have some, we may have discovered already some areas that need to change, but right now I have this 5% rule, and that 5% rule is like not, it's helpful, if you're one of those 5% kids, but sometimes you need more than 5%.
What's considered 5%?
Excuse me. It's like...
So, anyway.
So, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it's not just the townhomes of Hampton Oaks that's going to Stafford Middle School. If anybody paid attention during the middle-school redistricting, they would have seen me, my head blowing off my shoulders. You've got a lot of, there's a lot of houses up there, your constituents, that have been moved, so it's not just going to be Hampton Oaks, you need to look at the whole, at that whole area up there, because there's a lot more than just Hampton Oaks that's going to Stafford Middle School, so...
Thank you for bringing that up. I know I was not on the board at that time, but this is something that they brought to my attention, that little group. So, the whole area around them are going to Hampton Oaks and are going to HH Pool. There is that sliver within, yeah.
Believe you or me.
And so, that's that 5%, yeah.
I fought to keep them at HH Pool. I'm just going to say that. I'm not going to...
And I'm not going to mention, yeah, I'm not going to mention the other school that, because they were polled last minute, from what I was told. I don't know, I wasn't here, but they were polled last minute for another area to be able to go to, I don't know what school, Rodney, but, yeah, so I don't know anything, I don't want to just like...
So, I just offer that as if you're going to be looking at making some changes.
Yeah, so I guess I was seeking, not an answer, but if the board's going to do a middle-school redistricting, then what I just said is...
Please, it's very late, it's after 10 o'clock, we do not want misinformation floating out in the public, that we're discussing a major redistricting.
A spot redistricting could probably still be done with the other communities that are there.
And I'm not even suggesting anything for this year, I'm just saying, I think it's, you know, I wouldn't do it this year. But as we're looking ahead, there might be some areas that we could fix...
Right.
Because it just makes sense, and of course, I will let the board know about it, but not require a lot of study and board action.
To January, I think you need to really look at it hard.
I'm sending everyone to Ferry Farm, but, um...
Ms. Healy, if I could just make a comment. I think it's an opportunity, as we went through the redistricting process, and I can speak to the high school one more so, we did find, even during the high school redistricting, that aggregate numbers do not work by area. I mean, Dr. Chase and I, I believe, worked well, but the consultant kept saying, goes, "Do not move those kids out of Falmouth," and we both kept saying, "Please move them out of Falmouth." In the end, we ended up moving 80 more. But if you take those 80 and the, hold on, I'm not a math, almost 60 or 70 more that are in Falmouth that we don't think are there, we were off by then, like 160 or 70 kids at Falmouth. We have got to figure out why. I have some theories, but we have got to figure that out before we start talking about moving anybody, and even on a 5%, we have to understand what isn't, what was not accounted for there, because that area of the county, I am very concerned about. I've talked about TDR for a long time, I voted against it every time on the planning commission, because I think it is horrible that you can build that many homes and have no proffers, but can't relitigate that, I voted against it.
Well, this is just informational.
But I'm just saying, but I think that is something I would really like, when we get these projections, I don't want us to also do, like you were saying, let's just do it the way we did it, because somehow, we missed something. do it the way we did it, because somehow we missed something, at least with a couple of our schools. And if it's done small, it's in other pockets. So, I just, that's just something broad.
And do we appoint a new person already? Yeah.
I thought so.
Yeah, but, yeah.
We appointed the new demonstrant.
Yeah, yeah. I think you're going to be very satisfied, and he would actually say not even use a consultant. He feels more than qualified to do these enrollment projections. He's been doing it for Arlington County Public Schools with significant accuracy. So, I, that's good to have your own person, and we could look at it, because I do agree with you, the aggregate does not tell the, the, the most accurate story. Yeah.
All right, so, Dr. Chase, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, just, I just wanted to say, you know, the parents who came from the Hampton Oaks area, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at that, but I, I just want us to be careful that we don't have lots of other little areas that we would then find that, that we're overfilling HH Pool, or we're overfilling some other school in order to, to deal with that. So, I'm not opposed to having the discussion, but I, I do want to, I don't want to make promises without knowing the, the outcome.
May I comment?
Ms. Young?
I, I just want to close in saying that, as I stated before, they were slated to go to HH Pool, and at the last minute, they were moved and ended up at Stafford Middle. And so, for that reason, not just for that reason, but like Ms. Egan pointed out, there's other little areas that need to be looked at. But if it wasn't for some new parents moving into those townhomes, those individuals living there still would not have come forward. And Dr. Chase knows exactly what I'm talking about, because we've been in areas where we've asked people, how do you feel? Can you come and speak to us? And they never showed up. And they're 230 people strong. Some people just don't come because they don't think there's going to be any change. So, we, we need to, we need to be their voice. And so, I'm advocating. And it was nice that they invited me. They was like, hey, Pam, do you want to come? Because they see me at the school, I hear noise, and I walk up to Hampton Oaks, because it's right there on the street, and then they surround you and they create their own little townhome. So, you know, but it's just being the voice for those that are voiceless.
All right, what else, what else you want me to do?
All right, all right, approval, well, we don't have to do anything tonight. This is information, approval of the FY-21 school budget, school board budget priorities. So, that'll be back to us next time. All right, nothing else? Next school.
Can I ask clarification, Ms. Young? Do you want, how do you want the suggestion sent? I'm sure you all know that Revamp, the entire transportation system is going to be one I will be sending along. But if you want to send it to me, I can send it. I'm sorry, I'm an editor.
Well, let's just send it to, to Dr. Kizner, or, and, or Missy, and she can share it with the board, so we can, you know, all, all see it. So, anybody that wants to have any suggested changes in this, send it to Ms. Hall. She'll share it with all of us. Make sure you don't respond when it's sent, because then that could be a potential FOIA violation. So, just take it under advisement, and we can, we'll have a, maybe we'll even have a work session there before the meeting next time. Gee, joy, joy. All right, next school board meeting is October 8th at 7:00. Oh, my gosh, thank you, bus drivers, for being with us all evening.
Want a delivery now?
My daughter goes to Liberty, but there, but there's Helen and I'm on the swing set. They do that picture every year.
That is very pretty.
Isn't that great?
He's a good handsome, pretty girl. A handsome guy, pretty girl.
Let's see, and then I've got.